This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large counsel, Travis Chambers. District 10, at-large counsel, Lindsay McLemore, clerk of counsel and city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
All right, I think we had a little bit of a technical difficulty. We didn't hear the audio on the intro. It kind of threw me. I wasn't sure when to start. But we are delighted to have you all here as we call the May 13th city council meeting to order. We have somewhat lengthy business meeting, but then we have the Budget Review Committee, which will convene after about a 30-minute break as soon as we get through our agenda. We'll begin. I didn't see, is Chaplain Emilio Rosa? Is the chaplain here? There he is, hiding in the back. Emilio, please come to the front and we'll allow him to, or ask him to, to ask God's blessings on our work here today. If you push that button, I'll get your microphone turned off. We might want to turn the volume on these down just a little bit. Chris, I don't know if we can turn them down. And there you go.
Can you hear me? Okay, there you go. Greetings all. Good morning. I'm thanking the Lord for allowing us one more day to see another day. When I may pray an obfuscation over this meeting, I want to thank Mayor Skip for allowing me to be here today. So let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for allowing us another day, Lord, for allowing us to open our eyes, Lord. Father, we bring before you this group of others. We speak and we work for the betterment of our community, Lord. That all we speak here today may be of your liking, Lord, that you guide us, you help us, you give us the wisdom, knowledge and the understanding to bring these ideas forward, Lord God. That there be unity amongst us as we speak these things, Lord. Lord, and that you will always rule over our city, our government, our leaders, and all those who look out for our best. Lord, we thank you. We honor you. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Jeff and Rosa, thank you, sir, for being here this morning. Thank you what you and your organization do throughout the community. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start by saying that we hope everybody had a wonderful Mother's Day on Sunday. Isn't it nice we give moms one day out of the year? My wife wrote that down, so I'd say it. First order of business today is to approve the minutes from April 29th. It's a motion and a second. Are there any edits or any questions on the minutes as recorded? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? All right, the minutes are passed. We've got a couple of proclamations and then a few presentations. We'll start. Our first proclamation is will be presented by Counselor Hickey to the Salvation Army of Columbus, celebrating Salvation Army Week. You were doing what? All right, well, we, I'm sorry, we had a, we swapped them. All right, well, let's start with Counselor Anchor. He'll present it. And would our friends from Salvation Army, please come forward? Please come, Drew. Yes. You want to stand at the podium at the green light? And Mr. Mayor, I'm honored that, do you want to stand together, Drew?
I will.
Thank you for standing in the gap. Thank you. Mayor, thank you for letting me do this. I do feel honored to be able to read this and meet these ladies here that, and I think her husband is also a director and is not present. And I think it's very relevant that I get to do this. It's my first proclamation ever. And this was the seat of Judy Thomas, who served our city so well, and she loved the Salvation Army, right? And even in her service last week, we all witnessed her niece and daughter, how they were, how Judy brought up her children to give. And so, you know, I was reading about the Salvation Army, and I think I take it for granted that the Salvation Army, the name, it's a household brand and we just say it. But you're like soldiers. You are soldiers for Christ, and you're doing good in our community. And you're adding value to people who donate their time to stand there, who give their pennies. It's in the small stuff that we build a good foundation on. And you do so much in our community. And so I'm going to read this. The mission statement of Salvation Army, and then I'll read the proclamation, right?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
I don't know what the protocol is.
You're doing fine.
All right. Salvation Army is an international movement, and it's an evangelical part of the universal Christian church. And the message is based on the Bible. Its ministry is motivated by the love of God. Its mission is to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ and to meet the human needs, in his name, without discrimination. That's a good mission, and we're thankful. So I'll read this from the mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. Whereas the Salvation Army, a global humanitarian organization, has for over a century provided vital services to those in need, including disaster relief, social services, and spiritual guidance in Christ's name, without discrimination. And whereas Columbus, Georgia was the third active city in the state of Georgia to establish a Salvation Army mission site in 1895. And whereas the Salvation Army of Columbus, Georgia will celebrate 130 years of service to the community this year in 2025. And whereas the Salvation Army's work is a testament to the power of compassion by serving the most vulnerable members of our society. And whereas Salvation Army's service symbolizes the importance of community involvement as a source of strength and inspiration. And whereas the Salvation Army of Columbus has worked to enhance the economic vitality of the community by helping citizens in need break the generational cycle of poverty. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, proclaims this. The week, May 12th, 2025, our Salvation Army of Columbus, Georgia Week. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're going to introduce yourselves and give us a quick update on the building. We see it going up a little bit faster every day.
My name is Captain Deborah Pereira.
I'm Drew Hunt, and I am, well, Ms. Captain is one of our directors, along with her husband, Andre Pereira, who you might know. And my name is Drew Hunt, and I am the campaign and the communications manager for the Salvation Army. So I have the privilege of having my hands in the building, like you mentioned, that is going up on Second Avenue. And I did, I wanted to thank you guys. Y'all have been such a support. Thank you, thank you, thank you, from the bottom of our hearts for what you've done. We are working on, let's see, first floor, second floor. So if you drive by Second Avenue right now, you'll see the shell of the building essentially is there. And the thing that we're so excited about this building, it's really kind of two-folded. It's breaking that generational cycle of poverty because this building will help house families that are in need. Right now, if a family comes in, mom and dad have to separate. It's tough. So we're excited that families can stay together. Also, there is what we're calling essentially a workforce development component that's happening on the back end of this as well. So mom and dad, we don't just have a temporary place to stay. There is a skills development component that's going to happen to help mom and dad get back on their feet and to create a sustainable life to, as you already, as we've talked about, to really break that generational cycle poverty. So we're excited about it. So yeah, the building is, like I said, it's, I don't know, probably, we say 30% of the way there. So it takes a village. You guys know, a lot of hands involved. And I just want to honor you guys again for your help in the process. And so we're getting close. We're getting close. We're hoping to be finished by the end of the year.
End of the year, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Am I able to snap a quick picture?
Sure.
Real fast with Ms. Captain here? How, what's the protocol here?
You can come up here if you want and get a better, clearer shot.
All right, Ms. Captain, you want to run it there? Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Mayor, will you take a picture of you with him?
Well, however they want to do it.
Let me take that.
That's perfect. That's great. Thank you.
But I've got your proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Thank you so much.
And that does represent a public-private partnership. I know the city is participating some in helping to construct that. All right, next, Counselor Hickey will present a proclamation to, in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. And Chloe Lindreth will be here. Counselor, hit your light and I'll get it, microphone turned on. There you go. No, you're not Chloe, but you are Susan, and you'll do it.
You're Susan, yeah. Anyone else from New Horizon?
I believe we were supposed to have a group from the REACH program, but they aren't able to come over. They're delivering services right now.
All right, great, awesome, awesome. Well, I'd just like to first start out by saying it's a privilege and an honor to read this proclamation to New Horizon. I'm fully aware of all the good work that y'all do there because, you know, I'm a contract employee there with you as well. And I would like to say that, you know, the many years that I was part of law enforcement, starting out in 1981, the training that's being provided to law enforcement across the country now was something that wasn't in place at that time. And I just know that, looking back over my career, that I came in contact with a lot of people that were suffering from mental health. And of course, not knowing all the key factors, things to look for, as I do today, you know, I just wish now that when I look back that I had known what I know today. Because now, being a part of New Horizon, the knowledge that God has blessed me with to be around people like yourself, our CEO, Ms. Winston, you know, and just all the fabulous employees there, Dr. Shaw, you know, just how everyone just poured into the whole idea of just caring for other people. And it is just so important that there is a place where people can go when they're suffering with mental health to receive the treatments that they need. And because, you know, I was a caregiver at one point with my stepfather and also my mother-in-law's best friend. And I know what goes into that, being a caregiver. And a lot of times, it's hard on families, you know, but when you have a place like New Horizon where they can come and get relief and get help, it's such a beautiful thing. So thank you for what y'all do.
Oh, thank you, sir.
And I appreciate it. Okay? I'd like to start out now by reading the proclamation. Whereas Mental Health Awareness Month was first acknowledged in 1949 to celebrate recovery and raise awareness of mental health being essential to a person's overall health and well-being. And whereas being, bringing awareness to the importance of mental health reduces the stigma and discrimination that it sometimes associate with those who seek treatment. And whereas with the appropriate and effective mental health treatment, individuals are given the opportunity to manage their illness and more productive and fulfilling lives. And whereas New Horizon Behavior Health provides various services and specialty programs like REACH and Emerge that provide affordable and effective mental health rehabilitation care for adults and adolescents with mental illness and/or co-occurring disorders that successfully integrate them into our community. And whereas New Horizon Behavior Health is proud to partner with several local organizations, including the Muskogee County Mental Health Court, in an effort to lead individuals to a life of independence and recovery while preventing incarceration. And whereas New Horizon Behavior Health is proud to participate in the collaboration with other healthcare professionals in our community to better serve individuals regarding every aspect of their well-being through integrated healthcare because there is no health without mental health. Now therefore, I, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim May 20, 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Gallagher from New Horizon's Behavioral Health. Thank you, Mr. Hickey. And Mental Health Awareness Month is more than awareness about the work that New Horizons does. There are many providers, agencies, physicians out there that are treating individuals with a mental health or substance use disorder. One of the things I look for with Mental Health Awareness Month is reducing stigma around mental health, mental illness, knowing when to receive treatment. And Mr. Hickey talked very eloquently about the police officers being trained. There is a, it's CIT training, crisis intervention training. All the police, the sheriff's departments receive that. And not only do we work with the Mental Health Court, we also provide services to the Adult Family Treatment Court, Juvenile Drug Court, the Veterans Mental Health Court, and the Adult Drug Court. We're involved with services within the jail. Many individuals are incarcerated because of the behaviors associated with their mental illness. And we also provide some services within the prison to individuals that have a mental health diagnosis. We work closely with individuals being released from the state hospital or the Bradley Center and have many partners across the eight counties we serve, as well as across the state. But regarding the stigma and the training that the police officers get, New Horizons also provides free to anybody in the community some training around mental health first aid and youth mental health first aid. Chloe can't be here today because she's facilitating a youth mental health first aid training at the 2100 Comer Avenue building. We have over 27 parents, scout leaders, youth pastors attending this free youth mental health first aid training that's being conducted by professionals from our partners at UGA that have a grant fund to provide mental health first aid training across the state. I encourage folks to visit our website, and sign up for our newsletter or check and see what free trainings we have out there. In November, we typically do a mental health first aid training for people working with veterans that specifically targets mental health difficulties that the veteran population may experience. We will do youth mental health first aid training annually as well as the adult mental health first aid training. We need to work as a community to reduce the stigma around mental illness and substance use disorders. Those are those co-occurring disorders because people are not going to get treatment as long as there is a stigma associated with mental illness and substance use disorders. Thank you for doing your work to reduce stigma by recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month in a public forum, for giving myself and New Horizons an opportunity to share resources that are available out there and to encourage people to talk to their primary care physician when maybe they're feeling overwhelmed emotionally. Share that with your primary care physician because they know referral sources too. So thank you for that. On another note, I want to do a shameless plug. Mr. Hickey mentioned Dr. Pamela Shaw. She is one of our shining stars as far as in the treatment community. But I encourage everybody to turn into, tune into WLTZ on May 19th to watch Family Feud. Dr. Shaw and her family, her four daughters are on Family Feud that night. And not only is Dr. Shaw impressive, her daughters are impressive too. Each one of them has a medical degree. She's gotten them through this. It's just, she's very impressive as her work as a physician, but her work as a mother is very impressive too. So, May 19th, Family Feud. I can't tell you the outcome. She has a NDA, a non-disclosure agreement, so I can't tell you if they won or not, but tune in. Thank you.
We'll watch out for the feud.
Yeah, watch out for the feud.
Susan, thank you for what you do in DPH. And I also want to make mention that Counselor Hickey is very involved in that organization. He's employed there, and he does a lot of work for them, and we appreciate what he does as well.
We appreciate the expertise he brings.
Come around, let's shake your hand. I'll give you your proclamation. All right, we've got a couple of presentations. This one in particular is one I'm excited to get updated on. We want to invite Principal Long, Katrina Long, and all of those associated with Reese Road Leadership Academy to the podium. Pastor Bell, sir, if you'd come to give an update on their STEAM project that they've been working on. They brought some pretty impressive young folks here too. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jada Killings. I'm a fifth-grade magnet leader at Reese Road Leadership Academy. Thank you on behalf of Reese Road Leadership Academy and my peers for allowing us to come speak today. We are here today to give updates on our school-wide, project-based learning initiative. We initially started our journey at Evelyn Turner Pew Park, which was originally known as Carver Park. The purpose of us being there was to have access to the park and to use the park as an educational extension to our programs at Reese Road. We are there because the, we are currently at Cooper Creek Park. We are there because the Evelyn Turner Pew Park is being renovated. Our current PBL has expanded to beautify and maintain our school campus and local parks. The PBL for each grade level is aligned with the Georgia Performances Standards of Excellence.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rose McLendon. I'm a third-grade leader from Reese Road Leadership Academy. The kindergarten PBL is what do plants and animals need to survive in their ecosystems on campus and in local parks? The kindergartners are responsible for feeding the fish in our campus pond. In addition, the first-grade PBL is how does the weather affect plants and animals on campus and in local parks? Our first-grade students learned that as it gets cold, some animals have a hard time finding food. The students made bird feeders for the birds and hung them outside. The second-grade PBL is how do insects affect the beautification of the environment on our campus and in local parks? The second-grade students did math activity where they took a tally of the number and types of insects they saw.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Christopher Maddox. I'm a fourth-grade leader at Reese Road Leadership Academy. The third-grade PBL is how can recycling positively impact the environment of our campus and local parks? An example is third-grade students participated in a cleanup day around the school campus. We were recently awarded the Beautification Award from the Keep Columbus Commission. We were also awarded the Partners in Education Project of the Year Award from the Columbus Chamber of Commerce for our STEAM project. The fourth-grade PBL is how can we create and maintain healthy ecosystems on campus and in our local parks? To bring this standard to life, fourth-grade students did an activity where they walked through the water cycle as a droplet of water. The fifth-grade PBL is how do constructive and destructive processes impact our campus and local parks? The fifth-grade students did an experiment on a mock volcano. They used pumpkins as a model to demonstrate constructive and destructive processes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I am Mariana Reach. I'm a fourth-grade leader at Reese Road Leadership Academy. On May 8th, Reese Road Leadership Academy held our third annual Family STEAM Night at Cooper Creek Park. There were lots of fun activities. Each grade level had a station. At the first-grade station, I got a chance to make a bird feeder using toilet paper roll, honey, and bird seeds. At the second-grade station, I got to make a paper butterfly that will fly if you pinch the wooden clip. At the third-grade station, I did a sorting game separating trash from recyclables. At the fourth-grade station, I did a matching activity about producers, decomposers, and consumers. At the fifth-grade station, I used a handprint to list, identify, and illustrate the five groups of vertebrates. That night, we had food trucks and the Columbus Library Bookmobile on site. The food mill mobile market had organic fruits and vegetables, but my favorite part was ice cream truck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lenaya Scott. I'm a fifth-grade leader at Reese Road Leadership Academy. We have enjoyed using Cooper Creek Park as an extension of our classroom. Each month, we have taken trips to the park to complete lessons and activities. On our visits, we have noticed that there are recycling trailers at the entrance of the park, as well as many species of wildlife and birds. What we did not see was adequate eye-catching signs for how to interact with the wildlife, such as signs to not feed the birds bread but the designated food, or yield for geese or ducks crossing the road. Many of the walking trail signs have rusted and are hard to read. We would like to see updated signage, signs within the park to encourage recycling, and regular trash pickup. We would like to thank all of our organizations that have partnered with us. Special thanks to the City of Columbus, Columbus Parks and Recreation, The Edge Church, the Food Mill of Columbus, and Christ Community Church. We look forward to continuing our efforts of beautifying our school campus and local parks. Your support has given us a firm foundation in realizing that even as children, our voices matter and help create change in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd hate to be the adult that followed that. But if any of you would like to make a comment, I see our Principal Long is here. And I have had the opportunity to visit Reese Road on a number of occasions. It'll blow you away when you walk through and you see those young people. And what a great report.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am so
I am so proud of our Reese Road leaders and we thank you so much for your partnership because this project speaks to the why and it connects the dots for our students. So, we have had tremendous success with getting our students to love STEAM. We have had tremendous success with getting our students to understand the school and community partnership. And it is because our city manager took us up on the challenge three years ago when we presented to open Carver Park because a lot of our students actually reside in that area and wanted to get back into the park. So, that was the initial why, and it has grown. And it has grown because of the partnership that you see we need because these are the future leaders, these are the future faces, and possibly our elected officials coming up. So, we've got to train them the way that we want them to go. So, we're working on that. But because we, we got the challenge accepted, we partnered with Holly, with Parks and Recreation. We partnered with Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. We've partnered with the Food Mill and we've taught our students about food insecurities in our areas and what we could actually do about it. So, not only are they getting the science, math, technology, the engineering, reading, any E L A, they're also learning the community values behind it. And with me is the phenomenal team that helped pull it off at Reese Road, Ms. Shawna Woods and Ms. Cynthia Bullock and Reverend Bell from The Edge Church. So, he's an integral part in our partnership. We've actually had the church to erect a model pond on campus. So, what's, we, we had to learn about water quality at Carver Park in order to figure out what survived in the lake. And we had to learn that it was a lake and that it was not a pond. So, we've had a lot of learning experiences. And not only that, our partners helped us to stop the pond because we actually had a fishing rodeo at Carver Park last year. So, we are awaiting the renovations so that we can get back into the pond and look at ways that we can expand our learning extension. So, we are proud of the opportunities to get into the classroom. We thank you for your partnership. We look forward to the continued partnership of having the parks, all of the parks as an extension to our classroom. So, thank you so much for having us this morning as our students reported out. I'm proud of you guys.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes. First of all, I want to congratulate you all on being honored recently for being a military flagship school. I am a retired Air Force member. And I mentioned at East Columbus that during my son's first three years in school, he attended five schools. And it was because I started, he started kindergarten the last couple of months of my duty, my tour in Germany. We moved to Alaska and then we moved to Warner Robins. So, five schools, but it is really impactful when you have individuals like your staff, like educators, that really wrap their arms around military students and military parents. It's much needed. So, congratulations on that first. And then also, I, I gotta first say thank you to Reverend Bell because this, yes. So, we, we look at the product, but before the product even came to what it is, it was first Reverend Bell. So, Reverend Bell, thank you for your vision because you saw fit to choose Carver Park and you sat down for many years prior to this trying to get some action and redevelopment and bringing more energy into Carver Park and District Four. So, first of all, I want to thank you Reverend Bell for what you have done and also the kids and the staff for, for all that you are doing and will do. And I hope that when we get our, our new splash pad coming up soon, that the kids will go out there and have a good time. It is a lot of new development because of the splash that the citizens voted for and approved. We will have a new playground eventually. It's a lot of things that's happening, but it takes things like this, initiatives like this, that bring back that energy that Carver Park needs. And I appreciate you. So, thank you on behalf of all the citizens of District Four. And I hope to see you all during next school year. Please let me know if you have any events so I can attend you. But thank you all for what you do and thank you Reverend Bell. I appreciate you.
Ms. Long, thank you. Very impressive.
And thank you, students.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yeah, absolutely.
Three different groups in our.
I know.
Come on, guys.
Yeah. Not a bad way to start the day, is it? All right, got a couple more presentations, a couple of add-ons. One, a council who requested, Mr. John Turner is here to talk about a new project that is gonna, it's hard to believe it could enhance our, our river and all that it provides us any more than it already does, but it, it just might.
Thank y'all for having me this morning. Unfortunately, I'm not as smart, articulate, or dang cute as our prior presenters. Last time I was before the council with the crazy river idea, I think it was approximately 14 years ago. And just to refresh your memory on that project, we removed two historic dams and restored about two miles of whitewater to the river flowing through two downtowns, nothing like it in the world. And either wholly or partially as a result of that project, we've seen an explosion in development along the river. I think it's approximating, it's getting close to a billion dollars in new real estate development and, and counting. Over 40,000 rafters pay good money to get in our river and 80% of those folks are from out of town. With private funds, we built a zipline course, riverfront playground, splash pad, some of that with proceeds that we raised along with the river project. Now, y'all have been kind enough to appropriate some more money to that playground because it frankly has been overloved. We've hosted multiple kayaking events, national championships, and in 2023, we hosted the World Kayaking Freestyle Championships, over 300 athletes from 30 countries, exposure all over the world for Columbus, Georgia. And I may not be supposed to announce this, but we've just been selected as the host city for the 2028 World Kayaking Championships. First time venue in the United States has been selected twice. It was a competitive process, came down to two cities, Columbus, Georgia, and Paris, France, and Columbus won. The city contributed $5 million to that $26 million project, and I hope y'all agree it's been a, a good investment. This new idea has been more or less dumped in our lap as a result of hiring some engineering firms to study additional kayaking features in the river that would have been perhaps needed for the world championships. The new idea is river surfing. Think surfing on a surfboard only miles from any coastline. We're, we're just starting to learn more about the sport, but so far we've learned that there are roughly 10 times more surfers in the United States than there are paddle sports enthusiasts. So, it's a, it's a, it's a big addressable market and it's a growing sport because river surfing venues are being built in the United States. And, and it's easy to understand why it's popular because these waves that are being created are, are consistent, so they appeal to a wide variety of surfing athletes. It's an opportunity for surfers for the first time that don't live near a coastline. It's affordable, doesn't cost that much to buy a surfboard, and it appeals to young folks. And you know, I've, I've said, I get so tired of folks saying that Columbus doesn't have anything for young folks. I think it's an unbelievable city for young folks. But this would help us keep chipping away at that perception. River surfing features have been built around the country. I think there are five of them now that have been built, but many more are underdeveloped, underdevelopment. None in the southeast, though. Ours would be the only one, which would mean that our draw area for this particular sport would be really wide. The, our feature, we've been told by the experts, would be one of the best in the world. It would certainly be world-class, if not the best in the world, because frankly, we have a river that is unmatched as compared to other potential places to do this kind of thing. Where it would be located is between the 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge and the 13th Street Vehicular Bridge. That's a great place because it would allow viewing from the Riverwalk as well as from the 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge. And, and this is definitely a spectator sport. For everybody that gets in the river, 10 folks will come and watch them, and there are multiple examples around the world of how that happens. So, where are we in the process? It's really early days. We've spent, spent private money over the last four years to get to where we are today, and that is confirming that the project appears to be feasible. But we need to know more before we're really ready to say that we should do this. What we're asking for this morning is for the city to consider providing funding for continuing engineering and permitting studies in the 2026 budgeting process. If we're allowed to do this engineering, it'll get us to a point where what we need frankly is a firmer cost. Right now, we really don't know how much this will cost. We need that cost to kick off a formal fundraising effort, and this would be just like so many things in Columbus, a public-private partnership. And I think the private part would be bigger than the public, just like in many things that we've done. So, that's my request this morning. If any questions or we have time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselor Kogle?
Thanks, John, for coming up and, and letting us know what the future kind of holds in Uptown. You know, and I've, and I've told this before, or I've mentioned this before, when I moved to Columbus about 15 years ago or so, I actually came from Hawaii. And so, I got off the plane and drove across the 13th Street Bridge and thought, oh, what have I done? And Uptown Columbus has come a tremendous way in, in the last 15 years. I know there's been some crazy ideas that have been pitched and starts from, I was a big triathlete and thought that we should have a triathlon and why didn't anybody swim in the river? And over the last 15 years or so, we've put thousands of people in the river every year, very safely. And then Whitewater Express came, or Whitewater came along and we breached dams, and now we put thousands of people in the, in the Chattahoochee every year in boats, and they enjoy it. And I don't think that this is a far-fetched idea. I know from a personal level, one of the only things that was missing from my dear Hawaii was that I didn't have any waves to surf on and I was a little landlocked. And I know that there is some surfing that goes on at the island if anybody's ever been down there. There's a few rogue people that come out and surf that, that wave shaper wave. And this is a, a pretty big, if it's feasible, it is, it does have a big potential to expand our horizons on river usage and give it another opportunity for bringing in tourism. And I'm, I'm in full support of, of seeing what we can do, and I, I think those are some conversations that we can have in the future. So, thank you for bringing that, and that's pretty exciting about Whitewater in 2008 as well.
You're one of the few people that can actually stand up on a surfboard in the wave that we have today.
I am. So, I'll let you know when I go out there next. It's got to warm up. It's 70 degrees right now, so.
John, thank you for that. Thank you for your vision too. I mean, I, I think you, you were involved in, in, in whitewater rafting before there was the first raft put in that, in that river. And to look at the impact that it's had on our community by drawing others into Columbus, Georgia, and creating a subculture really of people who travel around trying to find these, these rapids. And the proof to me is in the fact that we continue to be selected by these worldwide global organizations. And when you look at the organization you just talked about and you go back about five years and look at where their competitions were held, it's phenomenal that Columbus, Georgia is mentioned in, in, in that. And to, you know, we nosed out Paris. I mean, that, 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 some people would just laugh at that, but that's, I, I think that it's interesting to me that the river that brought us power and economic vitality back in the 1800s is now doing the same thing again in a different, different iteration. So, we are in budget session, and matter of fact, we have one this afternoon, and I feel certain that it'll come up. And I know Selvin Hollingsworth is here, and I was going to call him up anyway for the next item. Selvin is the Chair of the Development Authority. I don't know if you have any comments on, on what Mr. Turner has brought to us this morning? Come on up, come on up to the mic if you don't mind.
Selvin Hollingsworth, I'm a 16th grader at the Development Authority, and I have a big old river behind our work. But we, I've talked briefly, Counselor Davis actually talked with me yesterday about it, and I did a lot of research. One of the things that this will do is there are a lot of people that will come out of, from out, outside the U S to do this. This is very unique. We'll draw people from Canada and a lot of other places that I didn't anticipate, and we're in full support of it. Anything we can do to help, we'll do. But just in the short research I've done, this would really, whitewater is one thing, but this would really set us apart from anybody else in the U S. I mean, this is something that would, with the proper marketing, could bring in a lot of revenue and a lot of attention to the city. So, we are 100% in support of it.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, ma'am. I, I, look, everything that was just stated, the R O I, the return on investment is unchallenged. We know that. And I'm looking forward, I, I think we most likely will have that conversation during the budget session, but again, I say that's just, the return on investment has just been phenomenal. I think far more surpassed what anybody ever thought.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir. John, thank you for your time. Selvin, you can stay where you are because I think you were the next add-on. We're going to let you give a quick, John, again, thank you so much for your vision and thank you for being here to present it. All right. Mr. Hollingsworth was here to request the council to give just a brief update on where we are with the development, possible development of South Commons. And I know there's a resolution on the city manager's agenda, and if, if we need to, we can pull that up. But, Mr. Hollingsworth?
First and foremost, thank you for your time this morning. I do have one very, very exciting announcement. Missy Kendrick, who is the new president- Missy Kendrick, who is the new president and CEO of the Development Authority started yesterday. So, uh, we're real happy with being able to be far more aggressive in what we do for Columbus in terms of recruiting new projects, recruiting, uh, all the things we need to, to grow. Uh, she comes from Rome, Floyd County and, uh, she brings with her a lot of experience. Uh, I'm, I'm really, that was a major coup and I, I, I'm proud to say that when we stole her away, uh, it was big. I've gotten a couple of calls from the state and congratulating us. So over the next, it'll be a minute before we, but we will, I will bring her around and introduce her to all of you all, whether it's one-on-one, one-on-two, but make sure you, you know that she'll be coming around to, to talk with you about everything she's doing, but I'm real excited about that, number one. Um, as for South Commons, we're really excited about the prospect of, of being able to do any type of study we can to develop the area. One of the things I do wanna explain, we talk about an RFP all the time, but the RFP is a tail end of the dog. There's a lot of research that has to be done prior to any RFP and that's what we're talking about whenever we talk about any money that's coming in to do a study. In order to even build the RFP, we've got several groups that we've worked with in the past that allow us to build a proper RFP to even bring back to you all for approval. So this, this is simply all of the things that we need to do to get our ducks in a row to generate an RFP. Uh, the big thing out of this that we'll, we'll get is what are the city's responsibilities? I don't wanna do anything, have a grandiose plan and not come back and say, hey, we need more utilities here, we'll need, you know, access to something here. I think that's real important. And then number two, we have to have a proper RFP to get the proper people to bid on it and to make sure that we cover all our bases. So it's a, this isn't a flip a switch deal. This, this may take six, nine months, maybe in a year before we even come back for an RFP. It's that, that extensive of what we're gonna do, but we're extremely excited about it. Uh, had an opportunity to talk with, uh, the people that did the development for, uh, Truist Park in Atlanta. Uh, they like the venue and everything we have here, but one of the things we will be able to do is leverage your knowledge, uh, on what's happened. Counselor Davis knows all of the people, uh, in that arena, so I'm looking forward to the process of studying all this, but more than anything, coming back to you all with a, a, a plan, a good plan that we can invest in and look at with no surprises. Any questions?
Well, thanks sir. Listen, thank you for your leadership of the Development Authority and with regards to Missy, um, I, I've already been contacted by the mayor and the city manager and employee of the regional vice president, George Power, telling us, we picked a plum. She's, she's, she's awesome. Great job.
We did and we, we've got some great things coming. We do have a couple of other projects. Uh, one, we're, this, some of the people that are coming that we are taking around town and taking to the technology, uh, park, they're international. Columbus is on the map internationally right now. Uh, we've, we've got some unique things going on here. The distance between us and Hartsfield is comparable to anywhere north of, north of Atlanta, so they don't see that as a barrier. Uh, but we are really being looked at on a favorable, favorable light outside the US and I think that's a testimony to the work that you all do. Uh, and I wanna thank you for it.
All right. Thanks sir. Uh, well, Mayor Protem?
Mayor, I'd like to call up item two on the city manager's agenda and, and move the adoption.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve item two on the city manager's agenda. Any discussion on that? That's the item that I think, uh, Ms. Hollingsworth was just speaking about. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes. Very good. Thank you. All right. Next, we've got a, um, a, a brief presentation by Deputy Chief Rodrick Graham from the Police Department. It's a police retention update. I think Chief Mathis is with us today.
Good morning. Listen, what we got here today Mayor is, um, I, I teach leadership school, uh, classes throughout the country and I was at one a few weeks ago and the person was talking about, um, the cost of recruitment and the cost of retention. So to, to, today what Rod is doing is talking about retention because we've done a real good job in recruiting, but, um, the retention side of it sometimes makes it difficult. And so I tasked Rod Graham and Assistant Chief Demphitspatrick to put together, um, a PowerPoint, 100% just educational of what it costs when we lose a police officer at about five years. And a lot of times, and I think even on our website, it talks about recruitment and retention. I think we need to change that. I, I think we need to change it where it says retention and recruiting because retention is far more important than recruiting. And, uh, this is, Rod put together this PowerPoint and he presented it to me, um, a couple of weeks ago and it's very educational and I just thought it would be important for the council to hear what Rod put together. Again, this is not a ask, we're not asking any, anything. This is 100% just for your edification. Uh, but before we get into this, I would briefly like to talk about something that, um, a crime prevention initiative that is starting this week at the Columbus Police Uh, on last week was my two-year anniversary here in the city of Columbus. And, and over the last two years, we've, uh, put a lot of time and effort in recruiting, retention and crime reduction. Today, um, we're probably at somewhere around a 28, 30% crime reduction since this time last year, which is important. But last week I was at a citizens' meeting and they had the statistics of our, our homicide, our murder rate down by 50%. But I would submit to you that everyone in this room would agree that if we have one murder, it's one too many. And until we can get the city of Columbus to a zero net-based crime rate, I'm not gonna slow down. So this initiative is all hands on deck for the next 30 days to eliminate all crime in the city of Columbus. I believe if we do this right, we not only could have a 50% reduction in crime by the end of the year, but we could be one of the top 10 safest cities in the state of Georgia. And it's gonna take all, everybody, everybody with their sphere of influence to work together to reduce the crime rate. I'm talking about the teachers, the preachers, the business owners. The teachers will be out of school in the next couple of weeks. That's gonna be several hundred extra eyes on the street that we could use. The preachers, I would submit that the preachers on Thursday at noon do a national city of prayer over the city of Columbus. I think if we do this right, we could be the beacon city throughout the state of Georgia. The city of Columbus could prove to everyone else in the state that this can be done. And this is gonna take all of us working together. And that's gonna start this week. I'm doing a press conference today at two o'clock, but I asked everyone, even at home, your sphere of influence, reduce the crime rate. If parents would go in and search their, their, um, their teenage kids' rooms, find guns or drugs, even if the gun's stolen, if they call the police, we will come pick that up, no questions asked. We're asking all the business owners to keep an eye out for each other. We're talking, asking the residents to keep an eye out for each other. We're asking the preachers to pray for the city. Actually, I want everybody to pray for the city, but if the preachers would on next Thursday at 12 o'clock, say a prayer of safety throughout the city, I believe we could hit a 50% reduction by the end of the year. So that's my spiel Mayor and that's over the next 30 days and I truly believe in my heart that this can be done. And two years ago Mayor, you hired me to reduce the crime and build relationships and that's my mission. Are those class for me?
They are.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, good morning Mayor, City Council, City Manager and City Attorney. Uh, today what I'm gonna be presenting is also as Chief Mathis already indicated, uh, this is not for the fact that I'm asking for anything, it's just looking at things as they already exist right now in the Columbus Police Department as well as the future of the Columbus Police Department. So as you look at this presentation, what you're gonna see is all about setup on a business approach. That's about our losses and gains as well as our return on, ROI's, our return on investment. So I'll go ahead and get started. So as already pointed out, we're gonna look at the current staffing, gonna look at our, what we have, initiative that we're working on right now concerning, uh, a talent management program. That's in its, uh, infant stage. We're gonna look at the cost to train public safety employees and I'm talking about police officers because hence I work for the Columbus Police Department, so I don't know what the figures would look like in the sheriff department or any other of the public safety areas. And then suggestions to retain officers as well as attract, uh, new police officers. So what you're looking at right now is the current staffing, that is as of this morning right here in that first column over there is outlining the positions in the department starting with the chief all the way through to the police officer rank. We currently have one opening in the rank of corporal. That is a fee that we, uh, we take those positions there, or field by individual that's in the police officer, uh, rank. So they move up. So when there's a open in the corporal position, then we feel that area with a person that's in the police officer slot being moved up to the rank of corporal. So what you're looking at right now, you're looking at, right now we have one opening in the rank of corporal as I pointed out, but we currently have 12 positions open in the rank of police officer. That's how many vacancy we have in that rank. That's seven of those positions are the position that we was most recently, uh, granted or increased here a couple of months ago. And then what that brings us is to, right now we had a 3% vacancy in the rank of police officer, but if we factor in the other open position of the corporal, that brings us to 3.35% vacancy. That is way under the national average. The national average range between 15 to 20%. So we have done exceptionally well in that area. It's not just the police department that has, uh, created these, uh, reduced these shortages that we had. It is also with the help of this council. The most recent, um, thing that I can recognize that, that the council did to help was that $5,000 that they gave the Columbus Police Department or Public Safety. And then we saw a tremendous increase in individuals applying for a position in the Columbus Police Department. So as I was just briefly mentioning about the talent management program, this is a new initiative to retain as well as recruit officers. And what we're talking about now is getting in the mindset of actual career paths, identifying what individual's strengths are, their desire, position and work them, eventually work them up to being in a position that they are seeking as opposed to once practiced was you was placed where you were placed. I think by getting individual's attention, using their skills that they come there and the skills that they develop, it creates a more comprehensive employee who feel like they are not just in occupying a position, they are actually in an actual career that they're choosing, even though it's law enforcement, but there's careers in law enforcement. And so some of the things that we're doing to address that, as been pointed out, is you're looking at first bullet there, you're talking about the sort of Georgia post certification for sworn personnel. What we're talking about in that area is certifications individuals can get as a certified supervisor, leadership and management. Getting that training to individuals before they need it, so when they are inserted in those positions or promoted to those positions, they have already started to cultivate the skills prior to entering those positions. I think that's crucial to help with retention because now these individuals are being exposed to supervising, leading and managing organization. And then also other career, uh, performance enhancing training for individuals that's not in a supervisor position or a management position, but still giving them, uh, those nuggets that will cause them to wanna remain with the Columbus Police Department because of a real bona fide career. And then you look at the next one there is talking about law enforcement training for, uh, policing in the future. We have to always think about the future because law enforcement is a dynamic field, is continuously evolving every day. And so we wanna be ahead of the curve by offering the most advanced training for the future in law enforcement. And then our mentoring, so we wanna mentor public safety employees at every level, from the officer all the way up through the assistant chief. And then lastly, this is where we're probably gonna need the city council help more than anything, is having a more defined succession plan. A succession plan is critical to sustain the continuity of the Columbus Police Department to make sure that in any time of any transition in leadership, that it is done seamlessly and we do not have any potential issues. So, cost to train public safety employees. One of the things about what we're looking at is not just the cost to train, but also mainly the cost to hire and train public safety employees. So what I've done is I've broken this down into three different categories. Category one is individuals that's hired with a high school education. Category two is individuals that's hired with an associate degree. And category three is individuals that are hired with a bachelor's or a master's degree. And so when you look at it, these are the thick costs that's associated with hiring individuals in these various different categories. In that first category, you see officers with a high school, uh, and GED. Just from the beginning, when an individual decide that they want to be a police officer, it costs us $40, meaning that they enter this information into what we refer to as ESOS. And this is how we track individuals that's wanting to be a police officer. In the beginning is $40. And so you can see these figures all the way through from ESOS credit report or social media, eye detect. Eye detect is what we use for, um, for you would probably be a polygraph. Uh, you may understand it as a polygraph, but the psychological assessment is $300 itself. I won't go through all of these figures, but some of the key figures is the training. The pre-academy training is $4,900. Going to the academy, this is each individual is $6,100. And then once they graduate from the academy, their continuous training is another $6,100. And then you look at their field training, which is at a little over $12,000. When you take all of this and add it up together, down there at the bottom where you see officer no degree, just the salary itself for that first year officer is $50,000. When you factor in all of the other costs, it brings their total cost up to $94,000. That's one individual with a high school education. You look in the second row over there and look across and you see the same thing and just go all the way down to the bottom where it says officer with a social degree. It is slightly higher because we pay an individual with a social degree slightly more. But you can see that the different cost remains the same because those are the costs that's contributing to the hiring and training. The 1% that you see out there is that's one of the 1% that the city gives at the end of their first year, bringing, increasing their salary by about $500. Now, let's look at, again, where I pointed out, where you see those stars, those are the key areas of what I'm making reference to. And so when I go to the second, the next slide here, you can see the comparison between a social degree, bachelor's, master's degree. And looking at those same figures, you see a slight increase between the social degree and the bachelor's and the master's degree. But what's again, the key that I wanna continuously point out is how much it costs to hire and hire. and how much it costs to train. These are single individuals. So, the loss of a five-year public safety employee. Now, when you look at this particular diagram or charting, what you're seeing is on a line item, you see the first year, second year, third year, fourth year. And what I'm making reference to is an officer with one year. Remember the salaries that I pointed out? Well, those are salaries and the salary increases going all the way across. The cost to hire, just the cost to hire is $497. That's just the cost to hire. The cost to train for that first year officer is $30,000. And then we have the sign-on bonus. And then, of course, the benefits of being an employee, the French benefits of being an employee. And then you see the $2,000 over there for uniform and the ballistic vest. So that's how we come up with the $94,000. But in year two, you see that the cost drops a little bit because that's not the cost to train does not remain the same. That's that initial training. And you can see the comparisons between, you can see the comparison between a high school and a social degree. I want to point out that this is normally where we lose officers, between the third, the fourth, and the fifth year. Because now what has happened, these individuals that we have put all this money into to train are now marketable. Marketable that other agencies seek them out. Let me just spend a little bit of time explaining that to you. You have an individual that now that they can recruit and bring in and pay them more money just the salary itself right off the bat. Because they're not spending any money. They're not spending the $30,000 that it takes to train them because they're certified and they can go anywhere in the state of Georgia, to include now anywhere in the state of Alabama and Florida as well. So those agencies are saving $30,000 per individual that they hire from us that we have trained. There is old saying that the Columbus Police Department is a training ground for other agencies. We train them, they get to year three, they're confident, they can do a lot of things on their own. They can do a lot of things on their own. But most important, the one, two, and three-year officers, those are the ones that may cost the city the most money because of their lack of experience, that sometime they make mistakes. So yes, these other agencies, they seek out the officer with three, four, and five years. So you look up there at that chart, the top one, with just the high school education, we lose an individual that we have invested time, money, and training in. It costs us $363,000 for that one individual. It gets a little bit more when we talk about the individual with the social degree. And then, of course, it only can get a little bit more when we talk about the individual with the bachelor's and a master's degree, already starting to approach $400,000. What's key here is this is talking about one individual. So remember when I talked to you about some of the shortages that we had? All those positions that you have heard Chief Mathis talk about, that we have had to fill, like almost 200 positions? That's a lot of money that has gone out the door. I'll give you another example here. In the month of January of 2024, at the end of January of 2024, our staffing was 335. By December of that same year of being 2024, we increased it to 371. And so you're talking about roughly 36 positions had to be filled. And just with just the officers with the high school education, that ran us about over $3 million to replace individuals that we lost. Now, looking at it from a business standpoint, we know that things cost more to replace when you're losing. The same applies to individuals. When the cost that it costs to train individuals in 2025 and 26 and 27, it would cost more to replace those individuals that leave. And so, as I get closer to wrapping it up here, this is give you a more consequential look at it. But the end results, you can look at the cost for 25 officers in category, in each category, for each particular category. So if we're talking about $363,340 for one individual and you multiply that by 25 individuals that have lost, that we have lost, had decided to go somewhere else at the end of five years, now you're talking about $9 million. That's just a high school educated officer. If you look at the one with the bachelor's degree and the master's degree, now you're talking about nine and a half million dollars. Does a significant investment that the city has made. And I will venture to say that these figures are pretty much relevant, including the Sheriff Department as well, when someone leave from their agency and go outside of the city. So, the current trend by other agencies I pointed out is to recruit our certified officers to save money. We are basically training, we are basically recruiting individuals into law enforcement, training them for other agencies to a certain degree and preparing them to move on to other locations. And so, this allow those agencies to have, be able to pay higher salaries because they're not paying those training costs. And what I'm showing you up here is, again, the total to train just one officer and this removing some of the other salary and the French benefit. But just the training of one officer, $34,000, just that one officer. Now, I left the sign-on bonus in there because that's something that would actually end up being taking place because of the recruiting, we use that as a recruiting. But if we, if we lost 41 officers, had to replace 41 officers, what you would see now is us paying over almost a million and a half dollars to recruit that loss. But again, you never recruit that loss because it costs more. So as I hear Councilman Davis mentioning about return on investment, this is the way that we have to look at this, getting the most out of these individuals that we are putting money in and to train them. We hire less than 7% of the individuals that seek out a position in the Columbus Police Department. Less than 7%. And so, these are some of the areas that make it very difficult sometime and challenging for individuals to be hired by the Columbus Police Department. I won't go through these, but you can really see what they are. And so, looking at those positions that I told you that we have that's vacant on this chart right here, the 12 positions or 13 positions that we need to fill, we only can hire, we only average 7% of individuals that apply. If we were going to fill these positions, we would need to process at least 200 individuals, 200 individuals in order to fulfill those vacancies. And I've shown you the numbers, what they look like. So make, make them off, you know, the math is if we need to hire 200 individuals, you can see that it would get into the millions of dollars of how much it would cost to replace those individuals. I think it was Councilman Chambers last week that mentioned about approaching and retaining our talent and doing what we need to do to retain our talent. And that's basically what I'm indicating here today. And so, some of the things that we want to suggest going forward, because it is about the future, how we want to retain these individuals, as well as attract new officers into the, individuals into this field in 2026. And these are just some of the things that other, other law enforcement agencies in other cities are promoting to recruit individuals from the Columbus Police Department. One thing is a reduced contribution from what it currently is, is 8% to 4%. You go out on anyone else's site, any other city's site, and this is something that you see that they're using. The other thing is, they're paying now, the going is 2.5% per year for maximum 30 years. These are the things that other places are using to recruit. And then also their drop program, which I have mentioned to some others in a different environment. But a change of drop from five-year plan to a five-year plan with no extension, rather than the current position with three-year and a option to extend three years. The reason why that's critical, so that we can establish bona fide succession plans. We know when people are leaving, so those individuals that we're putting money into train, we can continue preparing them to take the place of individuals that's leaving and we have a good idea as to where an individual leaving. That is critical when you talk about law enforcement. Again, maintaining the continuity of an agency is important. And then, the other thing, law enforcement is hard on individuals. It's mentally, physiologically, psychologically, and everything else that can, that can go with it. It damages marriages, it damages relationships, and the younger workforce do not see themselves working 30, 35, 40 years. They just do not see that. We currently have about five different generations in the workforce today. In the last generation, each generation get added on, they spend, they do not want to dedicate 35, 40 years to this, to this job or this degree. So, what we, one of the things that we see other agencies and other cities doing is making individuals be eligible to retire at a younger age, at roughly about at the age of 50 after 25 years of service. That also helps with recruiting and it helps with retaining. But mainly it helps with retaining because by the time an individual gets to that point in their life, then they're now, they're looking at ending their career. So, what I spoke to you about today is the current staffing, as well as our initiative that we're breaking on and bringing on into the police department, the talent management, as well as the cost to train the public safety employees, and then suggestions to retain officers, as well as be able to retain and bring on new recruits. Are there any questions?
No, sir. Doesn't seem like there are.
Mayor, real quick, I'd just like to reiterate something Rod said. When we talked about this three-year drop, that was a great idea somebody came up with. The problem is they ruined the whole three-year drop by adding the three-year extension. A three-year drop is we can start preparing someone to take over for that role. And then, at the end of that three years, they can decide if they want to or not do another three years. It's hard to prepare somebody for six years to take over a role. That the three-year drop, great idea, that extension completely ruined the idea of a three-year drop. So just wanted to make sure I explain that.
All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I did have one, maybe two questions.
Okay.
In regards to the training, if individuals leave prior to, is it a timeframe that they must stay on the job without having to pay back any of the training that we provide?
Yes, ma'am. There is supposed to be a 24-month period that if you are with an agency and you leave before that 20-month period is up and you go to another agency in Georgia, that that agency should absorb the cost. But they, there's nothing like that what they pay. It's about $2,400 as opposed to the $30,000 that we're pumping, that we're putting into people.
Two, $2,000.
About $2,400. About $2,400 in comparison to the $30,000 that it takes us to train someone.
Yeah.
And so, but again, this, what I presented to you today is just letting you know what we're trying to stay away from. And that's losing our employees after we contribute and put so much money and training into them. So it's just a matter of just thinking about what can we do in the future to mitigate this situation.
Yes. Thank you for that. And I do understand how those training investments work because, of course, it was like in the military and I have TSSCI clearance that costs, you know, all of it costs. So it's a cost associated with the person. And retention is, should be like our number one priority once we get them there. And that's why addressing morale was like top priority. I, I do, I have a question in regards to the drop plan and I see our attorney is away. How, how could we, because I know these are suggestions, how, how could we look at maybe addressing it when it comes to public safety? If this is truly, you know, something that they know this is a problem and the reason, and I, I understand because in the military, you have a certain amount of time, you know, that, that you actually have once you put your paperwork in and they can properly prepare for that departure. So, that three years and then you have another three years and they can decide or not decide, it makes it kind of unpredictable and it hurts your planning process. So, my question is, how could we, is it possible to look at maybe, you know, addressing it just for the public safety?
Yeah, it could be referred to the Pension Plan Board, the Pension Board, and give them the narrower guidelines of taking a look at that. Now, they, they don't make policy decisions. They just take a look at the cost and the value and they look at it compared to market and they make recommendations. Their primary goal is to make sure that we keep it as funded as possible without breaking the bank from the city's perspective because it's not something you can depend on. I will say that the, the original reconstruction sort of of the, of the, of the plan did not have as part of it, an additional three years. That was tacked on, I think, once council started taking a look at it. And it does create, it does create some challenges because if they're trying to identify people and folks are hanging around because they got a shot to move up, and so somebody's leaving and then all of a sudden they change their mind and extend for three years when now you may lose that person that had been trained and prepared. So, we can, we can give it back to the Pension Review Board and ask them to, to take a look at it. Well, Counselor Davis had already requested sort of an update from the actuary. And we're going to, we're working right now to try to get his schedule worked out where he can come give an update on it.
And that's honestly what I was thinking because of Counselor Davis's request in reference to looking at the pensions. So, if we could also look at this, as you suggested, would be something to improve that process, if you don't mind, sir?
Yeah, we'll put it on the table. And now, the interesting thing about the pension plan, and we'll, the attorney, City Attorney can speak to it more than I can, but you really end up having to sunset that existing plan and then start a whole new, a whole new plan.
So it can't just be amended for just the public safety portion?
Well, I mean, you could, but it would impact the entire plan. So you'd have to redo the ordinance. Have you hit your light? You need to, I think, I don't see your light turn on. There it is. Don't touch it. There you go.
There are certain changes that can be made by ordinance upon recommendation of the Pension Board. For instance, the change to step back the three-year extension could be made without having to close out the plan or impact other people as long as anyone in the extension could finish it. Other things would, you know, have to, other amendments would be considered on a case-by-case basis. And the first thing, any change, the Pension Board would ask the actuary to evaluate the effect on the health of the plan.
Okay.
Look at it.
All right, thank you. Do we, how, how's the, what's the makeup of the Pension Board? I don't know. Is it, do we have public safety individuals?
It does. In fact, Deputy Chief Graham is, is the Public Safety Representative.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Anker?
Is our training program, thank you, Chief and Deputy, for being here, Deputy Chief, is our training program amongst the best in our state? Do we, do we have a ranking for that? I know.
Yes, sir. Throughout the state of Georgia, it is recognized that the Columbus Police Department is the primary outstanding area for an individual to be a is the primary outstanding area for an individual to be trained. Whether it's their initial training or whether it's all the way up through the ranks. Columbus Police Department is recognized throughout the state. That is why we are targeted for individuals uh, wanting to fill their ranks. They seek out individuals in the Columbus Police Department.
That makes me feel really good. And uh, I think, I I have a lot of questions I, we won't go into today just around the, the quality of our recruits and the quality of our officers as they come out of high school or their associate bachelor's degree. How we're doing on in in increasing our quality as well as our quantity.
Well, you're.
And we don't have to touch on all that. I know we're gonna run out of time a little bit, but yes.
The the charting that I showed you up there is indicative of that. When I say we only can, we only averaging seven percent of the individuals that attempt to get hired, only seven in percent of those individuals make it through the process. So we um, interviewed and processed these two hundred individuals that seeking employment. We're only probably going to get about thirteen to fourteen that's going to make it through the process.
Okay.
And then that doesn't mean they get selected. Um, so if we just wanted to fill those seats with an in, uh, the warm body, we could do that. We absolutely will not do that. That's why we only actually hire seven percent of the applicants that we get.
Thank you. And now the comment is uh, you know, our vacancy rate at three and a half percent is really good. I want to see us get our number back of what we were promised, the four eighty-eight. I think when you talk about relationship and community involvement, the number has to be higher than it is for our community. We're growing, we're not shrinking, and we need to grow that number. So that's gonna have to go into the, it changes our equations if we raise the number to what, you know, the four eighty-eight number, not the three eighty-eight number. And um, last thing I say is, this morning I ran into a special ops team at breakfast, including uh, Manny. And uh, e- e- every officer I meet, I talk to them. And I'm very impressed with our, our culture and our police department, that elevation of the camaraderie and the pride that they take in their job. And I think that's gonna help retention more anything. I thank you for your good job. Thanks.
Counselor Anchor, I appreciate you asking that. One of the things um, uh, Counsel Reese said the other day, um, that we work uh, smarter than harder. We, we reduced our numbers because we want to hire the absolute best and we do more with less. With the technology advancements that we've made over the last couple of years, we are absolutely taking advantage of that.
And I think the target's four hundred, not three eighty-eight.
Yes, um, the target is four hundred. And and I made that contention that with the technology advancement we had, we've made, if we can get to four hundred, uh, I can, I can really do some really amazing things with four hundred police officers. Uh, just um, uh, i- it's just difficult to hire the very best and get to that four hundred number. So we're plugging right along, uh, Rod, when he gives those numbers out, he'll say, all right, we're thirteen down, but I've got six people slotted for that. The problem that they've uh, caused this, and this is the state. They went from having four police academies a year to only having two. So they have one in July and one in January. So right now, we're too late to hire anybody for the July academy. So we're just gonna hold some of these positions open until September, October to hire for the next academy. And that really put a, that really put a damper on what we're trying to accomplish here, having only having two police academies a year.
All right, uh, Counselor Kogle?
Um, thanks, thank you um, for the presentation. Uh, and I, I brought this up, I think, around this time last year. And um, I I'm not sure it really went anywhere. But in um, in reference to the re, the topic of retention, I, I would like to revisit the, and I'm gonna say this the wrong way because uh, I don't, because I don't think it's called one, the one seventy-one. It's the ordinance, the fifteen, yeah, the one seventy-one rule where it's the pay reform. It's ordinance fifteen dash thirty-five where it has, and maybe you can explain it a little bit better. Um, but, well, I'm gonna let Chief.
Yes, ma'am. If you remember when I first came, I was, I I've read that our police officers do not get paid at all. Not straight time, not overtime, don't get paid at all from working a hundred and sixty hours up to one seventy-one. I mean, they just don't get paid. Now, over one seventy-one, they will get time and a half. But from one sixty to one seventy-one, they just don't get paid. So when these officers have to go to sit in court for two or three hours knowing they're just not gonna get paid for it, it's upsetting to them. But, you know, when I brought that up, I was told it's gonna be too much work to unravel that. So I've actually left that alone.
Well, uh, I mean, thank you for leaving it alone, but I would like to not leave it alone and um, at least.
It had already been, yeah, it'd been asked for after the budget session when we got time to take a look at it, so.
Missed that one. Thanks. So it's all good. I wasn't here. Sorry.
All right, Counselor Chambers?
Yes, quick question. First of all, thanks for your leadership. Thanks for your service. Um, and thanks for implementing succession planning and talent management. I think that's the way to go. Um, but quick question, out of your turnover rate, what percentage do you have that is through retirement?
It's very low. It's very low. We're probably average right now uh, because of, when you bring police officers on, they come in what we refer to as class. So see, my class would have been individuals that was hired thirty-five years ago. Well, I'm the only person left in that class. And those individuals have retired either prior to me or gone on to somewhere else. So I would say that probably without having the numbers in front of me on a yearly basis, it's probably right around about two percent or less. Anywhere between one to one and a half percent of individuals that's retired.
So would you say that majority of your turnover is due to going to another agency for a better opportunity?
Absolutely correct. Again, that three-year officer becomes extremely marketable, extremely marketable. Taking in the factor of the training that they have been trained by the Columbus Police Department. They've been selected by the Columbus Police Department. All of those, in fact, are the reputation of the Columbus Police Department throughout the state of Georgia. And so it's just a place where other agencies, they they recruit, they bring people in. They bring people in at other places from people leaving from here into ranking position. An individual leave from here as a corporal can go to another agency and go in there as a sergeant or sometime maybe even a little bit higher. But this is the primary location that individuals, agencies are seeking out and cities are seeking out to recruit.
One last question. Through your talent management program, once you identify your key talent, emerging talent or um, your rising stars and 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 come up with the uh, development plan for them, are you guys having a conversation, letting them know that we've identified you as key talent? And you have a bright future here?
Y- yes, we are. And that's gonna continue through, with the chief just everyday conversation with individuals. But also a part of that talent management is the crafting and developing and selecting individuals to be in the mentor. So these individuals will be mentored by the individuals, letting them know. That's why it's so important that the succession plan ties into with the drop program.
Thank you.
And sir, the, uh, part of that is they meet annually with the, someone from the uh, training division to go over uh, their map of where they would like to go. And then we kind of guide them, but we also want them to have a little skin in the game.
Chief, thank you. Appreciate you all very much.
Thank you.
Chief, I'll, Chief Mathis, I'll see you at two o'clock.
Yes, sir.
All right, next is an audit committee update, uh, presented by John Redmond, the committee chair, and Michael Bruder, the committee member. John, you might want to pull that mic back to you a little bit. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be back with you today. Been a while since I've been podium. Uh, just wanna give you a quick briefing on the audit committee. Of course, this committee was created by the charter review uh, back in twenty twenty and we got started about two years ago. And the committee consists of five members, two of which are city councillors, Counselor Tucker and Counselor Davis is the current one. And also three citizens that are appointed by, one by the council, that's Michael Bruder. And then two that were appointed by mayor, and that's Mike Baker and myself. And we do appreciate your support in that. Um, one of the things that we have been working with uh, our internal audit staff as well as our external auditors uh, is to increase the efficiency of our planning for our audits. And what we recommend that we do is to uh, create a model for audit risk assessment. And that will help us to be more efficient in the use of our audit resources. And if we do that, um, it it will, it will enhance the effectiveness of the audit department. Uh, in order to do that, we need some outside consulting services from the consulting division. And we're recommending that that come from Martin Jenkins, our current auditors. And uh, in order to do that, get the assistance, we need about seventy-five thousand dollars of funding. And it will take about four to six months of them working with us to develop that model. And that model would be used ongoing for a number of years. So we would not require a redo of that. Now, they also also offer other services in their consulting division. For example, if you had a department that you wanted to have examined very thoroughly, they have a group of people that come in and do that. And I know some of the other municipalities have done that uh, in the past. But that's fairly expensive service and it probably runs about a million dollars per uh, department that you would have them do depending on the size and scope. But uh, today what we're looking at is getting some assistance with the risk assessment model. And we need seventy-five thousand dollars for that. You have any questions?
Uh, yes. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, um, first of all, I want to thank um, you Chairman Redmond and Mr. Bruder for taking time out of your day. I know you probably thinking, what did I get myself into? It's ten forty-one. Um, but thank you for being here. Uh, someone asked this weekend about the benefits of being an ACCG and NACO. And my answer is exactly this. Um, and it's actually not just the risk assessment, but it is the performance and operational assessment that we are requesting today. I will share the information um, that I've received from my peers who are county commissioners in um, DeKalb County and Gwinnett County. And they've done some real successful work. And I must say, they're all females and I just love them to death. Just putting that little plug in. But they, they came in and they saw that it was important to take a true assessment of the operational and performance of their government in order to move the government forward. And not only look at performance and operations, but look at the risk assessment side. So today, what um, we're really asking is for close to six hundred and fifty thousand for us to do a performance, operational and risk assessment for Columbus Consolidated Government. Now, when we were talking about this within the audit committee, we've mentioned one of the, the, I'm gonna say, in the proposal, it had some of the constitutional officers. And we said we wanted to keep those individuals in there. And it would be up to that constitutional officer to determine whether or not they want us because we cannot force any type of audit on constitutional officers. But we would give them an opportunity to look at their performance, operation and risk. And I think that's the best choice for us instead of leaving them out. And I would say Mr. Bruder, being a great individual, that he has made that decision. And I think that's a good decision. And I've actually spoken to some of the const- constitutional officer and even elected officials. They know that doing things like this will benefit them, especially when you have not had turnover or you're new and things have been kind of stagnant over the years and you want to, you know, ensure that you're actually performing at top performance for our government and our citizens. So I'm making a motion right now that we approve in the current budget, six amended to amend for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this performance, operational and risk assessment, which is being brought to you by our audit committee.
Second, second. All right, there's a motion to second uh, to appropriate up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, from the FY twenty-six budget. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's.
Thank you again, y'all.
All right, next is a transitional audit of the Office of Solicitor General, uh, presented by Donna McGinnis.
Good morning, everyone. You'll have your material here momentarily. Okay, as we advance your, your slides here, our audit authorization came on January seventh of twenty twenty-five at the request of our newly elected Solicitor General. And um, he, you know, stepped into role, uh, saw a need, uh, invited us in, was extremely cooperative. It's a pleasure to work with his team. At this point, I would like to uh, share the podium with Grant Conaway, who's gonna talk to you about audit process.
Good morning to you all. Uh, the audit process began when the uh, audit authorization was uh, initiated on January seventh. And once that was initiated, we began developing a program to give to the department to look at certain material aspects that we felt needed to be addressed. Uh, after that, we met with some of the leadership of the Solicitor General's office. And we presented them an opportunity to give us some other key areas that they feel that needed to be addressed. Uh, during our process, we uh, initiated some field work. We looked over three pay periods and found no discrepancies in any of them. Uh, we also looked at seven years of budget work. And we did not, the only thing that we noticed was consistent management uh, throughout the budget, even with the increase in volume of the uh, misdemeanor cases that the Solicitor General's office was uh, handling. In addition to that, we uh, looked on the, we observed the fifth and ninth floor of the building and spoke with uh, many members of the department, uh, issued some anonymous surveys and team interviews. And the consensus was just that many of them felt that there was limited space, uh, there was some old furnishing, some, there wasn't a lot of opportunities for continual education uh, during these years. Uh, and there were some requests for software uh, upgrades and some cell phones for victim outreach. Um, unfortunately, uh, that did not get addressed until uh, the new election of the Solicitor General came in the office. And the Chief of Staff and them have been doing a very commendable job on trying to correct some of the issues that were present when they took into their roles. Uh, like making sure that some of the supplies for the office are being managed, uh, payroll processing and trying to give their department some continual uh, education and opportunities for themselves. Yeah, and I'll pass it on to my colleague.
So the Audit Scope was intended to address all material aspects of the Office of the Solicitor General. And they included, but were not limited to, the organizational structure, policy and procedures, internal controls, cash handling process, strategic planning, payroll, equipment and budgetary control. We have a few recommendations. The first would be securing additional necessary office space in the new Judicial Center. Allocated square footage in the new center should be confirmed, but in the victim and witness area, it will be beneficial to consider remote office space in other CCG properties as victims and witnesses are all over the community. We would recommend additional staff positions in the FY twenty-six budget to correctly address the volume of misdemeanor activity. Using Georgia Sister Cities could serve as a guide to the amount of staff needed. We would also recommend the development of a pre-trial diversion programming, as well as accountability courts. We recommend funding for the continuing ed that my colleague Grant mentioned for current and future teammates. Many need these hours to maintain their earned credentials, and with new teammates, they would need to also seek credentialing for the first time. We would also recommend the scrapping of the old office furnishings and assets, the ones in compromised conditions. As a minimum, it's a risk management issue involving workers' comp. Once salvaged, replacement furnishings will need to be purchased. And lastly, we recommend a reevaluation of the software used, as well as cell phones for teammates directly interacting with victims and witnesses. As you can see, I know many of you have visited the Solicitor's Office, some pictures of the workspace and how crowded it is, some more pictures of the workspace, as well as the team. And at this point, I'd like to open it up to any questions.
Do we have any questions? Anyone?
Yeah, I, quick question. When was the last time that there has been an increase in head count in your department?
Why don't you join me at the podium, Solicitor?
City Councilor Chambers, I know I'm gonna sound rude, but I'm gonna say it anyway. When was the last time? I took office January one, so I'm worried about January one to where we are today. I don't look back. So, as I told the auditor, I'm just not worried about that right now. This city has to move forward. I ran on a platform to move the city forward, so the answer to your question, I don't know.
If I could speak to this just a moment, as we began working together to build a framework, you know, where did we come from to get to this place at this point in time? It was evident, normally we would go back three years and take a look at budget performance and operational activities. And when we first met with the team, I was challenged a little bit, can we look back a little bit further? We actually had access to records going back about ten years. And in going back, there consistently had not been active budget review, apparently, other than perhaps if there was an organization-wide COLA, perhaps, but there really had not been a change in budgeting. You very much came in at pitch point at about ninety-eight percent of utility of the budget. The numbers really didn't change. There wasn't really a history of actively coming to a budget review meeting. So in all likelihood, we're looking at the same number of staff positions that existed seven or eight years ago. You know, people may have left at a point. There were a couple of retirements and folks that left upon the election of a new solicitor. But the budget history suggests that there really had not been a growth in the roster in many, many years.
So has the volume changed?
You know, the way I put it, Councilor Chambers, I'm kind of the middle court. You have the Superior Court, you have a Court of Court, and then South Court is in the middle. We see expansion, as a matter of fact, I'm so glad the chief made his presentation. But there is a reason why we have an increase in police officers, an increase in the Sheriff's Department. There is a reason, and the reason is that volume is going up. So the answer to your question, has the volume changed? Yes, a lot, a lot, lot, lot. And I do intend to bring those numbers, those stats, I think I'm on for next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, yes.
I do have those numbers, and I'll bring them, but again, just listen to the auditor. My office, my court, had remained in the same place ten, fifteen years while everything else was growing around us. And I do intend to make my request by bringing those numbers on, Ms. Chamber. Did I answer your questions?
Thank you.
What we soon learned in working with the team was that they're very much forward-focused. They could, you know, have a lot of angst about the past, or, you know, promotional opportunities that never occurred, you know, that type of thing. But the team that has remained, they don't give up easily, and they're excited about the future ahead of them.
Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. With departments moving out of the tower and into City Hall, is there room that they could expand, and is there furniture that they could move from some of the vacant offices into theirs, you know, as a transition until they get into the new Judicial Center?
City Manager? Counselor, City Manager?
Councilor Tucker came by.
Excuse me, just a minute, Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry.
So, Mayor, I think most of the people will be moving out of the Annex Building. We are happy to take a look at any movement within the Government Center itself. If there are people out of the Government Center who would be moving over to the new City Hall around the September timeframe, we're happy to accommodate the Solicitor General and anyone else with additional office space. So we'll see, and we'll continue to work with the Solicitor General's office.
Okay.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Counselor Tucker and Sheriff Countryman. I think the first week I was there, you came by, you visited, and I expressed the need for some more space. I walked you downstairs to the elevator. By the time I got back to my office, Sheriff Countryman called me and asked me what I needed, and he offered me some office space, I think, for four personnel on the fourth floor. So I just wanted to take time to thank you for that, and also to our sheriff.
Councilor Tucker?
Yes, I absolutely have to thank the sheriff for, one, taking my call, taking it serious, and expediting that request. And I did walk through, and it is tight, and seeing people, and I know that I was told that it was coming, to have people's office in a vault. And for me, who have allergies and, you know, other conditions, I just felt like that, that's just, to me, not something that you would see in the second-largest city in the state of Georgia, for people to be in a vault, working out of a vault with limited air quality and things like that. So it's in dire need, and I know we're moving forward, and I think it was an update in reference to the new Judicial Center being completed, but I would say, if ten years we haven't looked at budget changes for the Solicitor's Office, I can imagine that in ten years, we haven't looked at the basic needs of the employees in that area, and I would really say, and I appreciate Counselor Hickey for going with me that day, but I would say, go to the Government Center and see how individuals, you spend most of your day at work, see how individuals, and it's May is Mental Health Month, right? May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Just go and see the mental drain that these people have going in to something that's really not, it really is deplorable, and insert, I mean, that area is not good. So we're trying, I try, to make it just a little better. I know it's not much better, but just a little better. But I will say this, and, you know, I wanted to say it during last week's budget, and it's something that I think we need to talk about, but this budget, to me, this is my fifth, sixth budget cycle going through, is, to me, it's a peculiar budget season, because normally, we have roughly a hundred and twelve days to play with when people come, like yourself, like Superior Court Clerk, like the judges, you know, law enforcement, we have those days to play with. Right now, we're starting off with ninety days. So we're having you come before this council body with your needs, which are valid needs, but we got more needs than money. We got more needs than days. And yes, I give an opportunity, and I did add a lot of people on the add-delete list, because we want to hear the conversations in reference to your needs. However, it's needed to be stated that we are at ninety days right now, starting off the budget cycle, talking about add-delete lists, when we normally don't go under ninety days. So it's putting the council in a peculiar situation, because now we're on a shoestring budget season for add-delete, and it's heartbreaking, because we want to help, but now we gotta really go through this budget and see where we may possibly have to delete something in the budget to help what's really needed. And we kind of have to, and I know the mayor prioritizes, and the city manager prioritizes, but it would be good to understand, you know, the priority, because we prioritize public safety, but we haven't prioritized the courts. We haven't prioritized that side. And I know, seeing that three hundred and sixty-nine docket, the work that you all are doing, and the stress and the strain that you're going through on a day-to-day basis, so I appreciate you and your staff, but I absolutely, and it's not just you, but I know we got a lengthy agenda coming up after this council meeting with Public Works and Parks and Rec and everybody. We are at ninety days right now. And I think it's just something that needs to be, to be said, that it's gonna be a stretch pulling this budget.
That is fine, Mr. Mayor.
Very quickly, if you don't mind, we have a lengthy, we do, and I'll remind Council, we have a very lengthy business meeting, and then we've got that lengthy budget meeting waiting on us.
First of all, I thank you for that, ma'am. I think the position that my office is in right now, just listening to the auditor, you know, in the words of my countryman, I'm Bob Marley, every man think his burden is the heaviest. I do think that way, because as the auditor says, it's been about ten years since anything meaningful has happened in my office, so I do anticipate I will make my presentation next week, and I will ask for your help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just had a question for the Solicitor, real quick. First of all, like I said, I echo what my colleague, Councilwoman Tucker, just shared with everybody. The plumbing, is there still, when we was there, there was a plumbing issue that was, water was leaking down into the office area, and did y'all ever get the mold and all that squared away over there?
I was in one of the deputy chief's office, and, you know, I've spoke with him, the city manager gave us, I think it was Jerry? Jerry? And he cleaned it up, so we're pretty good on that.
You got that, okay. Thank you, just wanted to check, all right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have any other questions?
No, ma'am, doesn't appear to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank all of you guys. All right, Ms. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda, business agenda list is short, but then we've got some other requests for meetings afterward. First item up is a housekeeping measure on first reading sponsored by Councilor Chambers, Mayor Protem, and Councilor Garrett. This would allow mixed drinks at a food hall location, which has been only beer and wine up until now, but also allow bottle sales, package sales for mixed drinks at city facilities, city-owned facilities such as Sanovas Park, the Civic Center, and the Liberty Theater. We're trying to think ahead and cover buildings that may need that from caterers, but these sponsors can comment now if they want to, and we'll see if they have any questions. Any?
See any questions or any comments?
Any questions around the table, we'll bring that back then for a second reading on the twenty-seventh, and a vote. The one resolution we have would be a hearing on a special exception for the firefighters' Lodge at six-six-five-five Lynch Road. I know there's a storage facility. Mr. Infro, anything besides storage that they're requesting?
No, sir, that's it.
All right, anybody in the audience want to be heard on this special exception request from the firefighter? Any questions? All right, you can approve of that, Mayor.
Motion to approve, that's the second. Any comments? Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and we'll ask councilors to register the votes. I should have stated this earlier, but I think Counselor Huff is absent, but is he participating, watching? Okay. All right, that's approved.
All right, appreciate that. We do have several requests for executive session, Mayor. The sheriff has asked for one on personnel. We need potential litigation and real estate acquisition and disposal also, so whatever time the council wants to call that, we'll take it up. That's all we have.
All right. Next, we move to the public agenda. Remind everybody, you'll have five minutes to make their comments, and I apologize in advance for cutting you off at the five minutes, but you will have an opportunity to come back for an additional three after the clerk's agenda, if you're unable to complete your comments. First is Ms. Ashley Williams regarding leadership concerns. Ms. Williams, if you will touch, hit that button on there, I don't know that we turned that on yet, there you go. There you go.
Okay.
That work? All right, if you would, just give your name and your address.
Yes. Hello, City Manager, Mayor, City Attorney, and Counsel. My name's Ashley Williams, born, raised, and current citizen of Columbus, Georgia. I hope you all are having a wonderful morning so far. I would like to preface that any and everything I'm about to say is not only personal to me, but also applies to every willing and able person who pays taxes in Columbus. These are simply facts that I have put together over a course of many years that directly affect every person in Muskogee County. I sincerely wish I did not need to spend this Tuesday morning standing in front of you all, voicing concerns about your leadership and how it has not only affected me personally, but every citizen in this county. But here we are, and I'm back. Did you really think it'd be that easy to get rid of me? Let me backtrack for those of you just tuning in. I'm Ashley Williams, and a Columbus, Georgia native, who worked to put herself through college and embark on a career in journalism. During COVID, I moved back home to Columbus to work at a local news station. I understand, City Manager, that that is your preferred news source. That's what you told the station's former general manager when I started researching, documenting, and investigating what exactly you leaders are doing with Columbus, Georgia taxpayer money. Keep in mind, this is the smallest and most chaotic market I have ever worked in, but guess what? This is my hometown, too, filled with people who have shaped me into the strong woman I am today. So yes, I care, and I, unlike some of you, I did and continue to do my job. I ask questions. I ask questions. But let's go back a little more. Mayor Henderson, can I ask you a question? Do you remember the first time I interviewed you in the mayor's office in the former government building? I remember vividly. Before we spoke business, I asked you if it was okay if I prayed for you. You responded that you've had a lot of people pray for you in your lifetime, but never a journalist. And then I prayed. Skip, rest assured, I still pray for you. But Mayor, my prayers for you and the people you surround yourself with, the people you continually act as a puppet to, and turn a blind eye to, I pray for all of you. Before I read the most important part about why I'm up here, I wanna encourage you, and not all of you, Toya, you already faithfully do this. But whoever needs to hear this, Columbus, Georgia is in shambles. I don't know how much you pay those people on the internet to reward us with a top-run city logo marketing scheme, but it must be a lot of money. We are already a laughing stock, and straight up, I don't care who you are married to, whether it's the head of the Democratic Party of Georgia, or your husband is an Arabian prince. I don't care. Go spend some time on Terminal Court or Clay Drive in Columbus. They're just across the street, not very far. And see how other people live, very different. I've personally done that, and it's very eye-opening. It's where people are scared to step outside, or just used to all the chaos because of all the gunshots that they grew up around and hear, day in and day out. Thank you, Chief Mathis, for your call to prayer this morning. That was very inspirational for our city. Everyone, next Thursday at noon, I think that will be something very good we should all participate in. So here's the most important part, I have about a minute left. Isaiah one, seven through nine, in the Bible. Your country lies in ruins and your towns are burned. Foreigners plunder your fields before your eyes and destroy everything they see. Beautiful Jerusalem stands abandoned like a watchman's shelter in a vineyard, like a lean tree in a cucumber field after the harvest, like a helpless city under sage. If the Lord of Heaven's armies had not spared a few of us, we would have been wiped out like Sodom, destroyed like Gomorrah. Isaiah one, eighteen through twenty. Come now, let's settle this, says the Lord. Though your sins are like scarlet, I will make them white as snow. Though they are red like crimson, I will make them as white as wool. If you will only obey me, you will have plenty to eat. But if you turn away and refuse to listen, you will be devoured by the sword of your enemies. I, the Lord, have spoken. Let me conclude by letting you in on a secret. The harder you guys work to do evil, the more it entices people like me to keep bringing light. Dig your grave deeper, or do the right thing, the choice is yours. Where's the money? Have a great day, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right. Next is Mr. Russell Pickren regarding transparency in the government. Mr. Pickren, here. All right. We'll move to Dr. Reverend Johnny Flakes III regarding contradictions. Welcome, Pastor, just state your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you so very much. My name is Johnny Flakes, P.O. Box fifteen ninety-one, Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine zero one. To Mr. Mayor, to Mayor Protam, and also to city manager, to the council persons, and all who are listening. This morning, I come to express concerns regarding what we see in the community regarding some city council members' contradictions in action, and how their contradictory actions causes confusion, distrust, and division. Their contradictions in actions are seen as someone who professes one belief, but acts in contradiction to it. Persons who say that they value honesty, but appears to misrepresent honesty frequently. Persons who makes promises and then breaks them. Promising to represent the people, but one's actions of not returning calls, not responding to texts, and voting record shows the total opposite. Contradictions in actions this community sees, council members will not call the internal city auditor to accountability for giving erroneous, misleading, misguided information, but certain council members publicly harassed, interrogated, bullied the city manager, and other hard-working, honest, loyal city department heads based on false, misleading information, which was invalidated by independent external auditors. Contradictions in actions this community sees are statements about valuing due diligence, slowing down the process, not rushing things. But this principle, this process, was not applied regarding the appointment of certain vacant district seats by certain council members. Contradictions in action this community sees are statements about respect. But we have seen certain counselors consistently disrespect the city manager openly at city meetings, council meetings, openly disrespect the mayor, openly disrespect city government employees, and disrespect certain citizens in this community. I wanna leave you with this. The drum major for justice, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., said, "Those who would listen," I quote, "A man or a woman dies when he or she refuses to stand up for that which is right." A man or a woman dies when he or she refuses to stand up for justice. A man or a woman dies when he or she refuses to take a stand for what which is true." And I want to unquote that. And I wanna leave you with another quote from Jesus, the Christ himself, from Luke, chapter twelve, verse three. And Jesus says, "Whatever you have said in the dark will be heard in the light. And what you have whispered in the inner rooms will be proclaimed on the housetop," unquote. In other words, whatever is done in the dark will come to light. Thank you so very much. God bless you, God keep you, is our prayer.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, Mr. George Schultz, ethics of council. Mr. Schultz here. All right, next is Mr. Mark Lawrence regarding caring for others. Mr. Lawrence, state your name and address, please.
Mark Lawrence, Fort Smith, Georgia. I wanna say good morning. I wanna say I love you all. This month is recognized, the month of May, as mental health awareness month. And I tell you some of the things that I have witnessed in the last months has almost drove me to another level. I remember it was November twenty-twenty-four. I was laying in a hospital bed, first in Walter Reed Hospital in Baltimore, Maryland. Came home, and I found myself in a local hospital. My heart was hurting. I had a defibrillator on my left side and a telephone on my right side. And one of the people I called was the mayor of this city. I wanted to apologize to him for how I had displayed my compassion towards others in this city. I cared enough to apologize to this mayor, because I didn't wanna embarrass him or this city. I can't say the same about everybody else that I called, because some did not return my call. But I called some people to apologize if you felt like I didn't care about you. There's no one on this council that I have talked to that haven't heard me say the words, "Thank you for what you do." Nobody that I have spoken to personally that I haven't said, "Let's thank her, thank you for what you do." I wanna say to this crowd, first of all, I'm a pastor before I am anything else. But next, I'm a citizen, citizen of this community. Just wanna read something. I learned at a very young age how to wash my hands. All of us did. Secondly, I was taught how to be kind to others. There's a certain council person, I wish she was here. I would like to say I remember being in the classroom with her mother. A homeroom class, to be exact. And she and I were friends. I'm friends to her daughter. I remember in nineteen seventy-nine bringing her mother Pepsi-Cola and vinegar and salt potato chips. I wanna tell you today, being kind don't cost you anything more than to let people know how you care about them. As I stand here with tears in my eyes, I'm so ashamed of how people treat people. You look to your left, and you look to your right. And you realize how you treat people is gonna come back to you. And I could go on and tell you what the Bible say. Many of you could quote more scripture than I could ever quote. But I wanna tell you something. Being kind don't take much effort. All it take is an effort to be kind. Let's trust the process. I ran for a public office, and I was so ashamed that I didn't win, but I was so glad, because I didn't wanna kiss the devil in his mouth. And I wanna tell you, we don't have to do that. We could be better to each other. When we talk to each other, we could talk kinder than we talk. When we show love towards each other, that is what Jesus said. I've seen your quotes in the Bible, I've seen your quotes on Facebook. But do you really mean what you say? When you tell these citizens of this community that you're working for their interests and you're trying to take down one another like pigs off a pole, do that really count? We're gonna live, and we're gonna die. But what will be said at judgment? When we get before Him, our Maker, will He say, "Well done, my good and faithful servant"? Or will He say, "Depart from me, you worker of iniquity"? I don't wanna hear Him say that. My soul is crying out, I couldn't sleep last night. I didn't wanna show up.
Mr. Lawrence, you don't know how much it pains me to stop you, because that's such an important message. But thank you, sir. And glad you're, glad you're doing well. Next is Mr. Gary Johnson representing Home Hardware, Inc., regarding spider web. Okay, I think Mr. Johnson is gone. Next is Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore regarding property located at twenty-nine, twenty-eight, Tenth Street. Ms. Palmore, just state your name and your address, and I'll start the timer, and you'll have five minutes.
Greetings to the officials of the city government of the Consolidated City of Columbus, Georgia, citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and others listening. I am Audrey Holston-Palmore. I reside in District Three. On a recent date, I applied to appear here on the public agenda. On March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, the approval to appear on a public agenda was a result of speaking directly of a concern I have connected to the Inspection and Co. Division of Columbus, Georgia City Government. I reflected on a fact. I am an heir of property located within the District Three. The Inspection and Co. Division has reported the property located at twenty-nine, twenty-eight, Tenth Street to be regarded as uninhabitable. The Inspection and Co. personnel, with direction of the director, has reached out to those associated with the property for at least two years. My position regarding the condition of the property was made known to the council as I personally think the property should be sold to a developer for future renewal. Because of the fact I have been in attendance of the legal opportunities afforded by the Inspections and Co. Division, it needs to be more input. At the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five public agenda appearance, the Director of Inspections and Codes, Ryan Pruitt, spoke about an August determination of the property. I have contacted the Office of the Director of Inspections and Codes several times, and only have, have I spoken with him one time. There has to be an ongoing effort to communicate to my fellow heirs about the property. I say an old saying that I heard while listening to a UFL program. When we get our mind right, and when we get our spirits right, we can accomplish great things. I have been given an opportunity to meet with Mayor Henderson on May twenty-first at eleven o'clock a.m. until eleven-thirty a.m. in the mayor's office. And I intend to be there. Hopefully, the other officials, like the counselor for District Three, Mr. Pruitt, the director of, the director of Inspections and Codes. When we get together, we can do great things when we put our minds together and the, and the information regarding the property at twenty-nine, twenty-eight, Tenth Street. And in August deadline, we will have covered information that needs to be covered for the proper decision regarding the property to be made. Thank you for your listening. I will come back for the three minutes
Thank you, Ms. Palmore.
when afforded.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right. We'll move to the We'll move to the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a number of items on my agenda today, you've already. Taken care of the one item related to. South Commons. And I will tell you now that I do have. One add-on, Mayor and Council, it's a street acceptance. And it was inadvertently, I'm told, left off my agenda. But was submitted in a timely manner. And I'll go ahead and deal with that first, Mayor. It's a street acceptance. The street that how. Has thirty-one residential lots have been improved and meets, it meets. The require, all of the requirement specifications for acceptance by the city. No question about that. And so it's a simple street acceptance, knowing that they have met all of the qualifications. And to not bring it as an add-on today. They can't pull permits and move forward with what they're doing, so I ask that you would approve that add-on today.
What's the name of it, what street?
It's Pan-Tar Drive. Portion of Pan Chase Drive located in section twenty, Garrett Pans. Pan-Tar Drive.
All right, what's the pleasure, Council? Motion and a second to approve the street acceptance, any discussion on that item? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, that's approved, Mr. Mayor.
So Mayor, the first thing on my agenda, I've got three transportation planning studies. Total two point two million, twenty percent match. One study is school traffic impact study. Another, the second study is Edgewood Road Study. And the final study would be a master plan for trails, sat walks. And just to give you an example on the school traffic impact study, it would be a study. To see how traffic impacts the transportation network. And how these affect quarters, affected quarters can be redesigned, you know, we always hear about. School traffic, especially during the school, start of school and when they're picking up or dropping off for school. And so these are three, three studies that we want to do.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve the three studies, any discussion on any of those? All right, please put it on the screen and y'all can register your votes, please. All right, there we go, that's, that's approved.
Next, I've got. Mayor, you've already done number two. Requesting approval of an encroachment.
Motion and a second to approve the balcony encroachment on Broadway, any discussion on that item?
And Mayor, you all know, we've done others on Broadway balcony encroachments, and this is just another.
Okay.
Request that's been made.
All right, please put it on the screen. And we'll allow the councils to register their vote. All right, and that's approved.
So next, I've got Mayor, a sidewalk and maintenance easement acceptance. It's on Bune Vista Road, where all the construction work is going on.
Okay, motion and a second to approve item four, any discussion on that item? Hearing none, please put it on the screen. Council, register your vote. And that's approved.
Next, Mayor, I've got Lake Bottom Public Art.
Motion second to approve the art at Lake Bottom. Any discussion on that? Please put it on the screen and, Councilors, you can vote. All right, and that's approved.
Next, I've got public art, it's the Hitting Wall at Frank Chester Rec Center.
Motion and a second to approve, public art on the rec center, Hitting Wall. Any discussion on that? All right, please post it on the screen, Councilors, you can go ahead and vote. I will say it's nice to see some of this public art popping up in all different areas of our community.
So. Next, Mayor and Council, I've got FY twenty-five local road assistance. From Georgia Department of Transportation, it's three million dollars to be used toward Marsh Road Bridge replacement.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion on item seven?
And there is no match on that.
No match, all right, please put it on the screen and, Councilors, you can vote.
Mayor, I think the counselor has a question over there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Anker?
Just because it's, if it's in that zone, we've talked about it, did you talk to a representative from the GDOT about that? Hot dog, Mars Hot Dog? And is there anything that can be worked in to ease it in the interim while we move forward on this bridge?
Well. We're going to talk about that a little later. But. I, I think. To visit, the position.
Later today? In the, the agenda?
Yeah, today.
Okay, thanks, I missed that.
No, that's all right.
It's, we'll, we'll talk about it later.
Okay.
But I, you know, and I know that you're concerned and I'm concerned and a lot of us and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work through it, but we'll, we'll have more conversation.
All right, and that item passed unanimously.
What's that, Mayor?
That item passed unanimously.
Okay, thanks. I've got Georgia Cities Foundation Youth. Placemaking Grant.
All right, motion second to accept the youth placemaking grant from Georgia Cities Foundation. Any other discussion on that? If you would, put it on the screen. Councilors, you can begin your vote. All right, and that's approved.
And Mayor, I've got a number of purchases, Mayor and Council. First is Amendment twenty for construction managers, general contractor services for the government center. And Amendment twenty is for additional costs related to the completion of City Hall Phase Two. And that is the bank portion. Of the building at City Hall that we have not yet occupied, we waited for them to move out. And after they moved out, we started the renovation in that building, and then recently you approved. Also funding related to relocation of city departments. That will be moving out of the Annex on Tenth. Into the new City Hall, because some of us who are in temporary space in the new City Hall. Will move to the four-story portion of where the bank was located. That they occupied longer than. Beyond the time that we moved into the new City Hall.
All right.
And so.
Is there a motion?
Amendment twenty.
Regarding the amendment. A through P? All right, is, is there? There's a motion and a second, so is there any that anyone would like pulled for further discussion? All right, hearing none, if you would. Put it on the screen and, Councilors, again, we advise you're approving, you're voting for one item, but you're approving all of those that are listed. Did you have a question, sir? I want to know. All right, Mr. City Manager, if you.
Okay.
Read what those are.
So Amendment twenty was three hundred fifty thousand for that renovation and, and moving expenses. And then B is maintenance, repair and operation supplies, parts, equipment, material. For various city departments on an as-needed basis. Got contract extension for banking and smart card services with Sunovas. And what we are asking is to. Through September thirty, two thousand twenty-five, to allow TAM to advertise for a new RFP for that banking service. Then we've got breathing apparatus for the Fire EMS department. On an as-needed basis. Got stage curtains for the Civic Center. And let me just mention, the curtains will be used as backdrop to keep out sunlight, block backstage activity during shows. And. That, and we're bringing this, obviously, these things are coming from Friends account. We have an eighteen-yard dump truck for Public Works. To move material equipment to and from work sites. Got a seven-yard dump truck for Public Works to move material equipment to and from work sites. Got security gate for Public Works Fleet Management. Currently, the automotive shop area has open access, the security gate is needed due to inmates working on the site. We've got network switches and access points for the Judicial Center. Got sound system upgrade for the Civic Center, the current speaker system at the Civic Center is outdated with some speakers no longer functioning. Has led to recurring issues during events. Got replacement rubber floor and, and floor and base for the Civic Center. Got replacement of glass doors for the Civic Center, these are the existing, the existing door, front glass doors are the same doors installed. When the Civic Center was constructed back in nineteen ninety-six. Got crowd control barriers for the Civic Center. Got a golf cart for the Civic Center to be used for transporting staff and equipment and also haulers for the Civic Center. For transporting staff and equipment. I've got a one-yard Viper. Rearload refuse truck and for Public Works. And will be used by the sanitation division staff to pick up bulky waste, limbs and recycling throughout the city, as a replacement vehicle. Those are the purchases, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Counselor Anker?
I just want to notate that it feels like we're, again, spending so fast. And I know Friends of Columbus is, helps our Civic Center, there's a lot of things we ought to do, but I've been hearing about hiring director for that department, I've been, you know, we've, we've recently put in our sports and entertainment district. And maybe there's some things like the doors and, and rains blowing in the doors, I don't know what the issues are, but. You know, I'd like to see money left in the accounts that when we get the, the new authorities, we have a strategic plan for South Commons and things are going that direction, that we're spending the money where it's touching the customers. And we're having a positive cash flow, so it's more of a statement than anything, it's just, it's hard to see. How fast we spend money and don't see the value to the customer sometimes.
I, I appreciate your comments, Counselor, and, but these are operational things, I mean, floors and doors and, you know, and so, but I, I, I understand your concern. And, and these are things, there again. Remember. What we're spending, unless it's Friends of Columbus, these things were already budgeted.
Right.
And, and sometimes, you know, like, when you approve this budget, they may not purchase those things July one. Because we're waiting, in a lot of cases, on the cash flow. When, you know, you pay your first round of property tax. And then your second round of property tax, and you get the money and you're not going to.
We're, we're raising our budget proposed right now, twenty-five million dollars a head, I, you know, how about a list of vehicles and dates and value points? For the future that, and that's a budget conversation. So I hear those things, City Manager, and I, I, we have to take care of our assets, you're right.
Well, but, but I appreciate your question, and I think they're good questions. Mayor, I have two updates. One. Update, but we'll do that one first, so the clerk, we won't detain her. We have two updates, one is going to be a combined sewer overflow update from the engineering director. But the other one, the second one is FY twenty-five budget update, clerk, Superior Court Clerk Forte. Because it will exceed budget, and so the finance director will present what we're faced with in that situation. Finance Director.
Good morning, if it's still morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. As the City Manager mentioned, the clerk of Superior Court is here along with additional staff pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine, which says that. If a department, agency, or elected office anticipates that they'll exceed their budget appropriations, they do have to come before this council and request additional funds. And so the, it's not the clerk's budget specifically, it is the budget that the clerk is responsible for relative to the Board of Equalization. I do believe the Board of Equalization Administrator is also here with the clerk. But just due to an increase in the number of hearings, new board members, training for those board members, these are statutory requirements. That the clerk is responsible for covering, we do anticipate that they'll need an additional twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars to get us through the end of June FY twenty-five. So that is the request, of course, the clerk is here, she can add some more context if you have additional questions, but it is due to the increase in the hearings. And those expenses related to those hearings specifically for the board members, for the Board of Equalization.
I have a question. Counselor. Davis?
Thank you. I know I was probably out of the country, but I requested a. Update of the finances, we, you know, a lot of people call it the, a lot of council members call it the dashboard, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, when, when is, did you pass that out?
We'll have the next one at the next meeting.
Yeah, but we did do one and we did, you did pass it out. What month was that?
I believe that was. March, right. I believe it was March.
She's saying you did it in April, but it was for, for March.
Closed March out and then distributed it in April, so the next one will be for.
It was through March, but it was presented in April.
When is the next one coming?
It'll be at the next meeting, the night council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Anker?
Yeah, I was curious about the Board of Equalization, obviously, the, the numbers are up on the number of hearings, and can you speak to the root cause?
Good morning, everyone, of course, I'm Clerk Forte, this is Lori Smithson, who's our Director of our Board of Equalization. Pass these up, okay, and I, we did actually, we were, but we did want to pass out so that, we, we do have a breakdown. And I'm gonna get Ms. Smithson to speak to it. Okay, well, do you hear the question?
And so what's increases the volume? I'm Lori Smithson, I'm the Administrator for the Board of Equalization. Sharon Tyner, y'all may have remembered Ms. Tyner, she was the previous Administrator, she retired in June of last year. So to answer Counselor Anker's question, the BOE does not. Control the amount of appeals that we receive every year from the tax assessors and everything, we can only hear the appeals as set down by Code forty-eight, five, three, eleven. So for the past few years, the amount of appeals have increased. It goes up and down, quite honestly, so in two thousand seventeen, y'all remember this, the countywide assessment? We had three thousand five hundred and forty-five appeals that year. The very next year, two thousand eighteen, it dropped down to five thirteen. So fast forward to two thousand twenty-two, we had one thousand three hundred and thirty-five appeals. In two thousand twenty-three, we had three thousand two hundred and twenty. And in two thousand twenty-four, I've had nine hundred and sixty-one. I actually have appeals scheduled at one o'clock this afternoon with a hearing officer that has come all the way from Brunswick, Georgia, in order to hear the appeals this afternoon. So to answer your question, we don't control that and everything, I have no.
Sounds like the number went down in two thousand twenty-four, or did you?
It did go back down in two thousand twenty-four to nine sixty-one. With the new, with House Bill five eighty-one passing, and it states in House Bill five eighty-one. That the chief appraiser shall ensure that all parcels are assessed every third year and everything. We are looking at the numbers to come back up again, probably anywhere from two to three thousand.
House Bill five eighty-one says it every year?
It, it says one-third, yeah, it says, shall ensure that every parcel in his or her respective county is appraised at least every three years. So they have a lot of work ahead of them. So they have a lot of work ahead of them and all. I can't speak to what they've been appraising in the past few years.
Well, I say Chief Whitehouse came in the room real quick to answer questions, but it really, I had a question about it from the Board of Equalization and the numbers in the budget.
Yeah, we can't control the volume of appeals.
I suspect there are some reasons why, and value is one of them, real value consistently appraised. I suspect there's probably some other reasons why. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the adjustment of the budget. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time today.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, I've got a combined sewer overflow update. Engineering Director Vance Beck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, the City Manager, City Attorney, and Council. The City Manager asked that I come and give an update. There were some emails floating around about the Water Works facilities and their role in controlling flooding. They are not flood control structures whatsoever. They do have a purpose, and I do have a short video they provided to explain, but I wanted to just talk general flooding. This was April 6th and so, in town. I'm gonna go through a countywide map of flood zones that the GIS guys put together, the intensity and duration of that rain event, the 6th and 7th, and then I'll show the video. That is our countywide map. And if you read in that top, there are 4,800 addresses within the flood zone. A lot of that is the older stuff downtown before the permitting and all, as such as it is today. So there is potential for flooding, and then you get the rain events like we had the 6th and 7th, you had two and, almost two and a half inches in six hours. Some of that infrastructure is just not gonna handle that. So, you know, certain rain events, it's gonna flood. It went on into, you know, four inches over the day, but, again, a lot of our infrastructure's older downtown area, built by the river, other areas around the creeks. So at this time, I would like to show this short video. It's very informative. I had not seen it before until it was shared when I reached out about it.
The Chattahoochee River is one of our greatest resources, providing significant benefits to thousands of Columbus residents and visitors year-round.
Columbus Water Works has a long history of being a responsible community partner. It's our job to protect the river, to make sure the water is clean for future generations to come. The Water Works was a vital member of the team that worked on the Whitewater project from day one, and that's because everybody knew that clean and safe was so vitally important if we were gonna put tens of thousands of people in the river.
25 years ago, the Columbus community invested more than $100 million in a system that has significantly improved river water quality. It also created the infrastructure to make Uptown Columbus a vibrant part of our community.
What you see along the river are miles and miles of sidewalks and trails filled with families, with cyclists, with runners, with soldiers. But what you don't see is the miles and miles of pipe beneath the sidewalk. It keeps our waters clean.
The Combined Sewer Treatment System, or CSS, serves a 2,000-acre area of Uptown Columbus. The CSS is hidden under the streets and sidewalks in Uptown, and this large underground system plays an important role in protecting water quality in the Chattahoochee River. Here's how the system works. During dry weather, the system collects water used in homes and businesses and moves the water to the wastewater treatment plant, where it is cleaned and disinfected before being returned to the environment. When it rains, the system also collects runoff from rooftops, streets, and storm drains. The mix of water is moved through the same pipeline to the wastewater plant for treatment. In a heavy downpour, the amount of water collection may exceed the capacity of the primary pipeline. The CSS system captures this extra water and diverts it through large pipes to one of two additional treatment facilities. On rare occasions, when the storm flow intensity is greater than the approved CSS capacity, some highly diluted combined water may flow into the river. Water coming to the backup treatment facilities is mostly storm water, which contains debris such as trash, sticks, and rocks. The water first passes through screens to capture and remove trash and other large debris. Chlorine is added to the water to kill bacteria and viruses. The water begins to flow into several large chambers, where it spins rapidly in a vortex to separate and remove rocks and grit. Finally, the water is dechlorinated, so it doesn't harm aquatic life when it is released back to the river. Columbus Water Works regularly monitors the water quality of the Chattahoochee. Testing happens in multiple locations along the stretch of the river through Uptown Columbus. These samples are tested at the Water Works laboratory to ensure the water we put back into the river is clean.
The Chattahoochee River is an incredible resource, and we have a job to protect it and ensure its health. Columbus Water Works plays a major role in that. We all have the same goal, a healthier, cleaner river and ecosystem for all to enjoy.
Whether it's a trip down the Whitewater Express or an afternoon with family at the Riverwalk, you can feel safe knowing our river is protected.
Anybody have any questions?
No, sir. Doesn't appear so.
Thank you, now. So, just a second. So, Mayor, I'm trying to recall why I asked you to come. There were emails, questions.
Someone had emailed one of the counselors that they had been told when the Water Works built those facilities that it would control the flooding.
Okay.
That someone in a high level of Water Works said that those underground facilities would control flooding. They do not. They treat the water before it gets into the river.
Sure. Okay.
But what our Public Works does, though, if there's a significant rain event that is forecast, they will make a run, if I'm not mistaken, through some of the areas that they have a history of.
Hotspots, yeah.
Yeah, and they will go, because a lot of times there's trash bags right at the edge of the intake, there's old mattresses.
A mattress, yeah.
And trying to get that stuff out of there before it clogs it up and exacerbates the flooding area. And, you know, they're just, there's areas of this community that, in fact, my assistant and I, before we were, when they were forecasting Hlean to come through Columbus, we rode through Oakland Park because we knew where there's some areas that typically, typically don't handle a lot of water in a short period of time very well, so.
And, Mayor, just before Director Beck leaves, I really want to just take this opportunity to thank former Director Donna Newman for hiring him and the succession plan that it created for us, that he was able to hit the ground day one with his history of having retired from the Alabama Department of Transportation. I mean, you know, he has not missed a beat and very responsive. You're doing an awesome job, and I just.
Thank you.
Wanted to express appreciation, but, but also just want to say that he didn't apply for the job the first time around. We had to go to him. He was just, he just didn't. He did not apply for the job, and I think you know that. And so we were able to go to him and communicate, and he did, and we have not looked back. He has not looked back. But thank you for the great job that you did.
Well, thank you for those comments.
Yep.
I'm enjoying it. Thank y'all.
Thanks, sir.
That concludes my agenda, Mayor.
All right.
Good afternoon. On the Clerk's agenda, the first item is a memo from me. This is addressing the public agenda application, and I briefly wanted to address some concerns that were brought to our attention. One of the guidelines pertains to meeting decorum, and this guideline was actually listed on the agenda that was available in our lobby. It was added in either 2022 or 2023, but it was left off the online version. Understandably, which I didn't think of this at the time, this caused some confusion when it appeared on my agenda. There, it kind of, it further lets everybody know just how important it is for us to be consistent and have transparency. I am someone that values details. People that know me will probably say that I obsess over them. So for this reason, that's also why the date was listed at the bottom, to let everybody know when that document was changed. So further on down the road, when the question arises, I don't have to do a lot of digging to try to figure that out. I do want to sincerely apologize for the commotion that this has caused. I did not realize that was going to happen. I made the change with the purest of intentions, just trying to move forward in our office. I do want to let the citizens know that in the future, if they have any questions, concerns, comments, please contact me directly. I'm open to conversations with anybody. You know, having open, respectful conversations will help us move forward. Your perspective may help me see a better way to do things so that we can provide the services that we need to, to our citizens. As Clerk, my suggestion to Mr. Mayor and the members of council is that we come up with a resolution that clearly states what our policies and guidelines are for our public agenda. This will make it clear across the board, whether it's in our lobby, whether it's online, of what the citizens can expect from us and what's expected of them. That's just something I'd like to put out for y'all to consider moving forward.
Well, and seeing as how the mayor's responsible for running the meeting, we'll bring something to council. I think what we have works. I think what's there is working. We just need to make sure that it's codified and the council understands what to do. We do, you know, and listen, I thank Mark Lawrence for his comments this morning because it is utterly, in my mind, ridiculous to have a parade of individuals come up with no agenda other than to try to elevate themselves by stepping on others. We're better than that, and we shouldn't have to struggle so hard to figure out where that line is, but that recommendation comes from the mayor's office, and it should, so anything that changes should go through the mayor's office before it hits the agenda, but we'll get that worked on.
And I did also want to state that this guideline is going to be removed from the application in our lobby and what is online. And just so there is no confusion, the date that will be notated will be today's date because it has been stated that it is going to be amended. So just to let the council and the public know.
Well, we'll take a look at it. We've got two other council, Counselor Tucker.
Yes, Madam Clerk. I appreciate your candor. You are very observative and you have great attention to detail, and I know you did that with good intentions. I didn't respond to many of the posts online, but it was not your amendment. This was something that was there previously, and as you said, Mayor, you do manage the meeting, and I actually had to reach out to Madam Clerk, and I wanted to make sure what I was thinking in my head was correct in reference to that, that that's your role is kind of like the chairman of our board, and you managed the meeting, and it wasn't Lindsey Mafflemore addition. It was something that the mayor worked on, and I wanted people to understand that this was, basically, don't beat up on my clerk.
Well, I will tell you, the mayor didn't have anything to do with putting that out.
No, no, no.
If that changes, and I don't mind taking the.
Yeah, she made the, that's not what I'm saying. She made the change, but she made the change to make it the same, consistent throughout the printed document in the hall and also online. It was just about being consistent because she is actually going through so many of our records, and she's bringing things up to a standard, and that's what Lindsey is doing right now, and that's the reason why she added it on the website to make it consistent with what was in the lobby. However, it's not her policy. Our policy is, in reference to how the meeting is managed, is based on our chair, who is the mayor, in regards to this. But I will ask this one question. Would not, well, I guess make a statement in reference to First Amendment. I don't mind, and I appreciate Brandon Wilkins, and he's such a brilliant, bright mind. I don't mind us wanting to keep decorum and make sure that we're not disruptive, but saying no disparaging words. As many people have said some crazy stuff about me, I'm fine with that. I will take that as a badge of honor and wear it with a big leather tee. I'm so, so cool with people saying nasty things about me. That's why I'm an only child and my mama raised me like this. However, do not put that we will not allow disparaging words because it, I went and I looked, I really did do the research in reference to First Amendment laws, and I just came out of public law class at CSU. We can't do that legally. It will cause issues, and it's causing, it's causing issues. That's the reason why we have people complaining. So when we do refrain that part of our policy, can we remove the disparaging saying we'll not? You can suggest, but you can't say.
I don't know that we've ever published that thing. Like, I'm not aware of anything we said no. So we'll get it to her. Let's just leave it like this. I'll get it to you, and then we'll make sure the council is updated. And we typically, what we do as a courtesy, we give council the opportunity to vote on that just so everybody's on the same page, so.
And I did want to state, and I should have said this with my first comments, no one directed me to add this online. Nobody. I just happened to notice when I was looking up something for another citizen, and, you know, I thought I was doing the right thing by adding it. And, you know, I was trying to figure out exactly where it came from. I searched our resolutions, I searched minutes, could not find it. You know, all I can say is that, you know, Sandra Davis, our late clerk, I'm sure that she was, you know, referring to chap, it's actually Chapter 20, Section 61 of Robert's Rule of Order. It doesn't state exactly that, but it kind of touches on that. But I wanted to make it clear, no one, especially Mr. Mayor, no one told me to put that on there.
We're good. We're good. Mr. City, Mr. City Attorney?
We can look at that with you, Mayor. If you want to remove that word and put in no obscenity or something like that, that's not protected by the First Amendment, you can. The main thing is the mayor controls decorum of the meetings. If somebody is up here calling foul-mouthed words out directed at councilors, the mayor can have them escorted out or tell them to take it on the sidewalk. There you go.
Yep. All right. Counselor Anker, did you have something?
I think you do a good job keeping the court. I would like to have that word taken out. I don't think any of us are immune to that. We can take.
I think, yeah, okay. All right. Counselor, Madam Clerk, continue with your agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Number two is a resolution that was approved by the Board of Health. This was adopting the rules and regulation of the State of Georgia Administrative Code entitled 511. Items three through five are, we will need your action. Number three is a request.
Motion, second to approve item three. Any discussion on that item? All right, please put it on the screen. Councillors, you can register your votes. Having trouble? I'll tell you what, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of that item, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's approved.
Item number four is a request to declare the seat of Charlotte Ingram vacant.
Motion to receive the letter of resignation and a second. All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's received. There's a motion, second. There's a motion, second to receive. The minutes listed below, are there any minutes from any of these groups that anyone would like to have pulled? All right, all in favor of receiving those minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're received.
Next, we have board appointments. The first ones listed are the mayor's appointments. We have the nominees that we still need for the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority. I know Mr. Mayor is working on those.
Waiting to hear back from those.
Yes, sir. Next, we have council appointments are ready for confirmation. We have the Downtown Development Authority. We have Alan Tabor, Ryan Kopage, and Carl Douglas that need to be confirmed.
All right, there's a motion, second to confirm Mr. Tabor, Mr. Kopage, and Mr. Douglas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they are confirmed.
Next are appointments, that these nominations can be confirmed by council. For the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority, the city manager is nominating Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Next, we have the Parks and Recreation Department. Director Holly Browder will be serving.
Motion, second to confirm Ms. Browder. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
For Inspections and Code, Director Ryan Pruitt will be serving. And for the IT Department, Director Forrest Holy will be serving.
All right, there's a motion, second to prove both those individuals. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, they're confirmed.
We will be contacting the River Center for their representative, and I know that Director Haley Tilery is working with the City Attorney's Office for the Trade Center. For the Employee Benefits Committee, we have the employee that's selected by the general government employees and the one that is selected by the public safety. They are both interested in continuing to serve, and they can be confirmed.
Motion to confirm those two individuals, is there a second? All right, motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Confirmations are approved.
For BHR, Councilor Cogle is nominating John Schefdal to represent the Historic Columbus Foundation, and we will list him for confirmation at the next meeting. Then we have council's appointments. Any nominations will be listed at the next meeting. We have, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. John Schefdal can be confirmed.
Motion and second to confirm Mr. Schefdal. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
All right, now the next ones. Any nominations will be listed at the next meeting for the Columbus Sports and Entertainment Authority. Councilor Cogle has submitted a nominee for the promotional entity, for the professional hockey, Jeff Croup. All right, we will list him for confirmation at the next meeting. Then we have the Downtown Development Authority. Billy Blanchard and Stephen Butler are interested in serving another term if someone would like. Thank you, Councilor Crabbe. We will list them for confirmation at the next meeting. And we also need two more nominees so that they can move on and handle the business that's at hand. For the Employee Benefits Committee, Shannon Hubbard is interested in serving another term. Thank you. Then we have two seats that the people currently serving, they are not eligible. One is for general government employees, and one is a sworn officer. We have received two nominees from the HR Department. We've got Tommy Beecham as general government and Jules Hazen as the public safety, if someone would like to nominate them. Then lastly, we have the upcoming board appointments. These are memos that are listed, and if you notice, the format is different. There's been a lot of conversation and questions that have arisen from council regarding the activity of the board, so I tried to add that information to help us keep up with where they're going. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, before we go into executive session, Ms. Palmore has requested three additional minutes. So, Ms. Palmore, if you'll come to the mic, please, ma'am. And we've got your name on record. You don't have to repeat that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to direct a question to you for the city attorney to respond to. On March 11th, when Ryan Pruitt, the Director of Inspections and Code, was there, I recall the city attorney stating the conditions that a demolition would be enacted.
I'm not sure I understand the question. You said.
Okay, the question is on, I would like for the city attorney, will you advise him to say the conditions under which a demolition could be enforced?
The city attorney is not a, he's not an expert in structural environment, so it wouldn't be fair to ask him to determine whether or not it was suitable for habitation.
Yeah, well, it was stated in the March 11th public agenda. Well, I'll go on with, so the citizens can review that for themselves.
Right, those determinations are made, actually, by Mr. Pruitt and his engineers that go out there and check them all. All the city attorney does is read through them as they're presented after they're compiled by the city, the city's Inspection and Codes Director. But I'll try to see if I can get Mr. Pruitt to join us when we meet, if his schedule allows.
Yes, on March 21st.
Yes.
Yes, I'd like, and the counselor, Mr. Huff, if he could be at the meeting, that would be.
Need a bigger conference room, but we'll see. We'll get as many of them there as we can.
Okay, good. Now, I say I have one minute and 12 seconds, but I didn't get a response from the city manager, so could you restart my time?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I am stressing to the District Three community the factor that the city attorney, you have to look at it yourself, on March the 11th, did make a statement in regards to the time, I mean, what the provisions are for demolition according to the recommendation of the Director of Close and Inspection. I will report to the future discussions that you and I will have and others on May 21st. I shall return to this podium on the public agenda to report to the community what the decision is scheduled for August that Ryan Pruitt spoke of. I shall return to this public agenda to report the findings. Thank you for your attention.
That's it. Thank you, ma'am. All right, we need to go into executive session for the Personnel, Potential Litigation, Real Estate Acquisition and Disposal. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, we are in executive session.